Okay, I'd like to call the P and P Committee meeting to order at this time. The first thing that we will do is have the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, in the true republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, very good. Before we go any further, Dr. Herman, you have comments?
Great, just a comment before, public comment. For tonight's program and personnel meeting, we will focus our time and attention on receiving the recommendations from the Grading and Assessment Committee, the presentation from the Artificial Intelligence Committee, discussing the first and second readings of board policies, and tending to other routine items. An update on the placement practices will be discussed one week from tonight at our regular board meeting for the following reasons. We are currently in conversations with the D-128 Teachers Union about possible late-start professional learning times and the stipend overload lab tutor positions. Sharing tentative information publicly prior to reaching an MOU would not be good practice. We are working with department chairs, instructional coaches, teacher intervention staff, and members of the MTSS teams to refine aspects of the support plan we presented on April 29th. Many of these tasks are interconnected, and we do not want to share enhancement to the plans that are still in draft form, as they may lead to misinformation or confusion. Therefore, a comprehensive update will be presented at next Monday's regular Board of Education meeting on May 20th in the Vernon Hills Library at 7:00 PM. The update will include refined implementation plans to support students and staff prior to the start of the 24-25 school year. Thank you.
Very good. Is that loud enough out there? Can we? Good. Let me know if it needs to be louder still. Are you there? Are we good? All right, thumbs up. Okay, the first item is communication. That's an invitation for public comment. We have two names on the list. The first is Katie. Katie Zager.
Hello, my name is Katie Zager, and I'm here as a concerned parent of a future burn hell type. In the last meeting, I watched you mute the mics and now that people get to their closing statements. So let me get to my closing point. You all have become the villains of Vernon Hill Academy. It is abhorrent how you blatantly insist on ignoring the outcry of teachers, students, and the concerned parents. It feels like you're purposely trying to sabotage your kids' future by shoving multiple concerning initiatives at everyone's throat. For any initiative to be successful, you will need teachers. How are you all not concerned after seeing that abysmally low scores of their survey results? How are you all not prioritizing addressing that first and making sure our teachers feel heard, respected, valued, involved, and supported? Are you not supposed to be the voices of our community? Do you just tune out these public comments as white noise? You must realize that people move to this district and pay taxes specifically because of the high schools. Do you realize that once parents become aware of the chaos you're putting in motion, many will choose to move out of the district? Why do we have a person who is not looking to improve the relationship between the district and the teachers, who doesn't seem to care about students or parents' concerns, who is being sued for discrimination, and who left multiple past districts in shambles at the helm of ours? Why are you all backing and fast-tracking initiatives that have not been thought out and for which your community has raised numerous red flags? Do you realize that you're setting a district up for failure? What are you getting for pushing these unbaked plans through? What is up with the marketing spin on the diagonal mover celebration? If my child, who otherwise would not be eligible for honors or AP courses, got into them because of a lowered bar, and if it meant that consequently they will be struggling and drowning in coursework as a freshman because there is no adequate support in place, and if that meant putting their mental health and GPA in jeopardy, I certainly wouldn't be throwing a party. The reason there aren't more people here today is because many are simply unaware of the storm coming. The storm that you're all putting in motion, the storm that you're failing to communicate about to the current prospective parents, the storm that you have the power to stop before it ravages our schools. It is not too late to stop, press pause, and think about what truly needs to be implemented and the best way of doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.[342.12][342.12](Applause). The next name on the list is Marnie Navarro.
My name is Marnie Navarro, lifelong Libertyville resident, proud District 70 and District 128 graduate, and mother of an incoming District 70 student. I speak to you tonight, as always, as a concerned individual taxpayer and parent. Tonight, I'd like to speak to the board about communication. At the last board meeting, hundreds of deeply concerned parents, community members, teachers, and students, and several hundred more watching online, came and spoke to you, imploring you to listen to our teachers, students, parents, and press pause on the imminent launch of numerous converging unsupported initiatives. We beg you to stop unanimously rubber-stamping the excessive spending of this administration and to hold... Okay, thank you. I'm not... Okay. We begged you to stop unanimously rubber-stamping the excessive spending of this administration and to hold Superintendent Herman responsible for the hemorrhaging of millions of our hard-earned taxpayer dollars on a bloated administration, the largest in Lake County, expensive outside consultants, and exposing us to incredible liability on multiple discrimination claims instead of building MTSS and conducting much-needed and overdue repairs on LHS. For all that spend, we should not be in this boat, attempting to cobble together MTSS support in the last few weeks of the school year. It is simply unacceptable for Superintendent Herman to tell us that the toothpaste is out of the tube. Our Board Policy Section 810, Connection with the Community, provides that Superintendent is the district's chief spokesperson and shall plan and implement a district public relations program to keep the community informed and build support through open and authentic communications. Open and authentic. There is nothing that has been open and authentic about anything that is or has or is happening at District 128. These initiatives were snuck under the radar over the past two years with zero transparency or communication to the parents and community until mid-March, when I and other parents started asking questions. Since then, it has been a blitz of misleading incoming emails and graphics, lacking underlying substance, and an attempt to conflate issues and confuse parents. I guess they think a graphic a day keeps the parents away. Wrong. Section 2230 provides that public comments at board meetings are limited to three minutes, but Board President Hessel may permit comments over three minutes. What has she done instead? She has opened both the March 18th and April 29th board meetings with inflammatory, condescending, gaslighting statements, which reflect a truly mind-boggling level of hubris, contempt, and condescension, and tone deafness towards our parents, teachers, students, taxpayers, and community. She cut the public speaker's mutes, muted our applause, and it takes a week for District 128 to post our board meetings online. How is this open and authentic communication? It isn't. At the April 29th board meeting, we presented you with a petition of nearly 1,100 signatures. You did not blink and charged ahead with unanimously approving everything this administration puts forward, as you did in March when you riffed 9.7 FTEs. Superintendent Herman misled this community when she said at the three-hour, two-minute, 20-second mark, for those of you watching who want to play back at home, that she was the voice of the parents and students, partner to our teachers, who were not at the board meeting because they were allegedly uncomfortable to speak. Huh. I FOIA'd these allegedly supportive communications, and here they are. All six of them. Six emails, up against two of them from personal friends, none of which say they were too uncomfortable to come and speak to you here tonight, and all of which presume that there was a plan in place to support these initiatives, which we now know there isn't. Six against 1,100 petition signatures, hundreds of teachers, parents, community members, attending and speaking at these board meetings, and sending you all hundreds of emails. At the last board meeting, this community called for a town hall. I have 10 seconds.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. This community called for a town hall meeting. I reiterate that call. Jim Batson, Don Carmichael, Kara Drumke, Kara Benjamin, Sinal Kulkarni, Mitlesh Kotwal, you are elected representatives with fiduciary duties to this community and our students. Three minutes and cutting our mics is not a dialogue with your stakeholder groups. Let's have a town hall meeting where we can have an actual, open, and authentic dialogue. Let's talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? You don't have to have signed up first. Feel free to approach the mic. Mr. Hessel?
A mistake, repeated more than once, is not a mistake. It is a decision. It is a behavior. And this Herman, and many people in this room and administration have made plenty of mistakes and repeat them. We will provide examples of them soon, but you know what I'm talking about. You've lost the trust of this community. You've lost the trust of the teachers. You've lost the trust of the students because of the way that you have responded. Mr. Kelly sits over there always, disengaged, not paying attention, always looking with a scowl on your face. That's how you reflect to the community, and I've heard that over and over again from people. But that's how you respond to people. Jim Batson, why won't you respond to the community, the teachers? Ms. Drumke, you've done a pretty good job of raising some questions, but we need you to respond as well. Mr. Kotal, we need you to respond. Ms. Benjamin, we need you to respond. Mr. Carmichael, we need you to respond. There's a storm out there, and what this woman said first is what is happening here. You have disrupted this community, the school district, and you're repeating same mistakes that you've made before. We'll provide that evidence. We have lots of evidence now against what's been happening here in this district. You can no longer sweep the dirt under the rug. We need to start cleaning house.
Okay, thank you.[743.82][743.82](Applause). All right, is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Step up.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Brian. It's good to be here. Appreciate the opportunity to be up here. This is probably where I talk about. I'm a Class of '95 graduate, proud parent, but that doesn't matter. Or where I talk about moving my family back here, my four beautiful children, to go to the same schools that I went to, which I was very proud of. But I don't think that matters either. I could talk about all of the money that's been spent and wasted, millions of dollars on random initiatives, I believe kitchen remodelings or renovations, office furniture. We could talk about that, but that doesn't matter. We can continue to expose all of the lies and the terrible job that's been done to this community by the board and the superintendent, but that doesn't matter. We've done that every time. And the reason it doesn't matter is because this board does not care. No one on this board cares. We have voiced this repeatedly, and everyone just sits there, they nod their heads with blank stares, and they say, "Well, okay," and they just move forward. So everything we say, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter how many signatures we get. It doesn't matter, because this board, through their actions, not their words, and that's something that I tell my kids quite often. Don't tell me what you know. Show me what you know. So this board can sit up here and post emails and responses, but it's your actions that we're watching. Unanimous votes, removing teachers. And I remember earlier this year, there was talk about, "Oh, we know what's coming. We know about the hard decisions we're going to have to make." Did we know about those hard decisions when we decided to get $17,000 in office furniture? Or tens of thousands of dollars on remodeling kitchens, I think it was? Did we know about that? The fact is this. The only way that this will change is not on this board, but it's with the people behind me. Because I will tell you, out of all of the failures that I've heard, and there are a lot of failures with the money, the lawsuits, it's unbelievable. And I think the most unbelievable thing is that to have the audacity to say that the board is keeping the superintendent accountable? Do you know what accountable means? Do you know what that means about taking responsibility? This is how we're going to teach kids to be responsible? By this? It's unbelievable. But out of all those failures, I will tell you, in my opinion, the biggest failure isn't up here. It's back here. Every one of these seats should be full. It should be packed. This room should be packed with parents that are completely pissed off, and we know now, and now it's our turn to be accountable. Because if the board is keeping the superintendent accountable, then we are keeping the board accountable. And the only way we can do that is to vote these board members out this spring, remove them, and put them in place with someone who will actually hold this superintendent accountable.
Your time is up. Thank you.[977.18][977.18](Applause). All right, is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to move on to the next agenda item for discussion A. We have a presentation from the Grading and Assessment Committee.
Hello and good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight for a grading and assessment update. I am Charlotte Eames, Director of Data and Assessment and proud member of the Grading and Assessment Team. Tonight, I am joined in this presentation by another team member, Jenny Getch. She is the current LHS World Languages Department Chair and the incoming LHS Assistant Principal of Student Services. I just want to take a moment before we get into the meat of the presentation to absolutely brag about this team. Here you can see our membership, both from last school year and the current school year, and I want to say publicly a huge thank you to these people for their dedication to this process. There have been times throughout the past couple of years when it has felt like our work has gone very slowly, but that is a testament to the thought and care that has gone into every single decision we have made. We have had many honest, open, truly thoughtful, and yes, lengthy conversations at our meetings that have led us to where we are tonight, which we will be sharing with you in the following slides. For the next portion of the presentation, I will turn it over to Jenny.
Thanks, Charlotte. So we wanted to remind you of our initial goal when this team was formed in the fall of 2022. It was to investigate, analyze, and recommend fair and equitable grading practices that are research-based and are more consistent for all learners. So why are grading and assessment changes needed? So we first surveyed our staff in the beginning of the 22-23 school year, and what we learned was that practices and beliefs about grading and assessment varied widely across the district. Our community has been asking for more consistent grading procedures, and this work, in part, is a response to that feedback. Ultimately, what we wanted to do was to ensure that we're consistently providing meaningful and high-quality grades and feedback to our D-128 students while giving teachers the ability to work within their course teams to utilize the standards in a way that best reflects their content and priorities. When we looked at our previous grading practices, they were vast and varied. But in our work, we wanted to use caution not to make our grading practices too narrow, and this is in part due to specifically the nuances that occur within departments and the desire to allow for some course-team choice. So our desired outcome fell in the middle, narrowing of grading practices, but not so narrow that course teams did not have that room and flexibility to make choices that are right for their courses. This is a reminder of the timeline of our work. In the beginning of the 22-23 school year, a committee was formed. We surveyed our teachers about their grading practices, and we worked to create a first draft of the guidelines. This school year, we have run a pilot of the new grading practices and taken feedback from students, teachers, and parents to inform revisions to our draft guidelines. And the committee then adjusted the guidelines to what our current vision is. Our original plan was to then have full implementation of the revised guidelines for next school year, the 24-25 year. And although we have a recommendation for lengthening this runway, which we're going to look at a little bit later in the presentation, it also is important to note that the guidelines are a living document and that we will continue to refine them as we continue to learn and use them. So as mentioned, the pilot this school year that we've run included 96 teachers and 74 courses, and the pilot provided valuable feedback on the experiences and the experience of teachers' experiences and the experiences of their students, and it helped the committee as we guided and shifted and made the necessary revisions to our draft guidelines. And then this became official for the 24-25 school year we finalized our guidelines. And before making any decisions on the actual guidelines, the committee felt it was really important to establish our grading and assessment philosophy. This philosophy guided our decision-making, and at those points where we got stuck, we were bogged down with conversations, we went back to the philosophy to keep us grounded in the work that we were doing. The philosophy states that a grade should provide an understanding of students' individual academic achievement. Students' knowledge, skills, and application of course standards will be measured through course activities and their assessments. So our work was also grounded in the common theme of consistency within the school course teams, which was a large part of the original goal of our team as we worked toward creating these guidelines. So based on the philosophy shown on the previous slide, our team identified and developed four main areas of grading and assessment parameters. Assessment and accuracy, regular, timely, and transparent communication, grading scale, and reassessment. Each category had several parameters within it, which are described in detail in the 24-25 grading and assessment guidelines, and we're going to summarize them now. So for assessment and accuracy, one parameter involved grading formulas. Course teams needed to agree upon a grading formula that incorporated 80% to up to 100% for summative assessments and coursework being worth 0% to 20% for the progress period grades. Course teams also must agree on whether their course would include a final exam or experience, and that final exam or experience would be up to 20% of the overall semester grade. Another parameter within the assessment and accuracy category involves behaviors and human skills. The behaviors listed here, class participation, effort, adherence to class rules, and lateness of assigned work, can't be included in a student's grade unless they are tied to a course standard and have defined growth measurements. Under the regular and timely transparent communication category, we've developed parameters around when grades must be updated. At a minimum, teachers will update Power Teacher at the midpoint of each progress period, and Power Teacher must be up to date to reflect their current standing at the end of each progress period. So for P1, P2. In other words, at the end of each progress period, a student's grade must reflect what it would be if they were to leave the class today, or that day, rather. These parameters were developed in partnership with our MTSS team for purposes of ensuring that we were able to properly monitor student progress in their courses, and this will also be included in course syllabi. These parameters will be reflected and linked through Power Teacher so that they will be visible to students, parents, and guardians. And in the grading scale category, the Grading and Assessment Team determined that the use of an equidistant grading scale is necessary so that no single category can account for more than another when determining a letter grade. So course teams must agree on a grading scale and can choose between two options. The 50% to 100 grading scale with an option to use NE for no evidence, which would equate to a 40% in the grade book, or they can choose to do standards-based. And under the reassessment category, we have several parameters, which are in line with the ways that reassessments have been handled over the past several years. And the course teams must make consistent decisions in regard to what work can be reassessed, the readiness criteria for students to be eligible for reassessment, the time constraints around those reassessments, and the grade replacement policy regarding those assessments. And I'm going to pass it back to Charlotte.
Thank you. On the previous slides, we have summarized the parameters as written in the 2024-2025 grading and assessment guidelines, which were originally planned to be implemented throughout the district next school year. The Grading and Assessment Committee met on April 25th to discuss if and how we might be able to lengthen the runway for implementation in order to put focus in other areas. After an incredibly thoughtful discussion, we are making a recommendation to do a partial strategic pause. The partial pause developed through the team's realization that there are certain parameters within the guidelines that we feel are, at this point, non-negotiable. At the same time, there are other parameters where we know that further learning would benefit our teachers, and the recommendation makes these parameters optional for the 2024-25 school year. The optional parameters fall under the assessment and accuracy portion of the guidelines. Specifically, they are the grading formula and the lateness of assigned work. We will look at these in more depth on the next slides. For the grading formula, course teams not ready to implement what is outlined in the guidelines may wait until the 2025-2026 school year to do so. Course teams do not need to use the two categories of summative assessments and coursework, and they do not need to adhere to the 80% to 100% and 0% to 20% in those categories, respectively. It is, however, the recommendation of the Grading and Assessment Team that course teams still make this decision together, because we are still seeking consistency among our course teams. In other words, our recommendation states that course teams must use the same grading formula and categories if they choose to use categories at all, which will not be mandatory but will be encouraged. But the grading formula and categories they use do not have to be what is written in the current guidelines. Lateness of coursework is listed in the 2024-2025 grading and assessment guidelines as a behavior that cannot be included in a student's grade unless specifically tied to a course standard. The Grading and Assessment Committee recommendation is that this not be a requirement for 2024-2025 implementation, but will be in 2025-2026. In summary, course teams that are ready to implement all guidelines in the 2024-2025 school year can and should do so. We have many course teams that are ready to move forward, and we absolutely want and encourage them to do that. Course teams that are not ready for the 2024-2025 school year can opt out of either or both of the specific parameters we have made available for opt-out: the grading formula and the lateness of assigned work. By opting out of these for the 2024-2025 school year, these course teams are opting into professional learning, which will occur throughout next school year to ensure readiness for the 2025-2026 school year. Following the grading and assessment meeting on April 25th, the recommendation we've outlined on the previous several slides was brought to DLT on April 30th and all admin on May 1st. More information was requested before finalizing a decision in regard to lengthening the runway. So we gathered that information via a brief survey of the Grading and Assessment Team membership. Our team, in the past... Our team in the past at our meetings has used a fist to five protocol. So we used that format to ask the first three questions. This key shows the way that a fist to five protocol works. A fist or zero is someone who is saying absolutely no way, I do not support this decision at all. And it goes up to five, which is someone who is saying, yes, I 100% support this decision. So here are the results. Our team members gave their fist to five rating on three things. The original recommendation of this partial lengthening. The option of not lengthening the runway at all and moving forward with full implementation next year. And the option of doing a full pause of implementation for 202425 and waiting until 202526 to bring this back. As you can see from the results here, the grading and assessment team as a whole. Most fully supports the original recommendation of doing a partial lengthening of the runway. I do want to note here that we did ask on this survey for our team members to identify themselves as teachers or administrators. We had 11 teacher responses and 12 administrator responses. And there were some differences in how the two groups responded. What is shown on the slide is the overall responses for the full team, but I do want to share a few notes on where we saw differences. So right here, we're looking at the bar for a full pause and I have highlighted the seven people who responded absolutely no way, I don't support the full pause. So seven out of our 23 responses gave that a zero. Of these seven, five were administrators and two were teachers. In the middle bar, we are looking at the responses for don't lengthen the runway at all, let's just move forward. There were five of our 23 members who gave this a zero, a no way, I don't support that. Of these five, four were teachers and one was an administrator. So we saw a difference on what was a no way for teachers and administrators in those cases. Mostly it was teachers who said no way to don't lengthen the runway at all. While it was mostly administrators saying no way to the full pause. But even with those differences, the group overall is showing the most support for the original recommendation of the partial lengthening. Here we see a total of 16 out of 23 team members who gave at least a three. And three stands for this decision is okay with me. To the recommendation to partially lengthen the runway. Of these 16, there was a fairly even split with seven administrators and nine teachers responding within the three, four or five category. In this same survey, we also asked team members, if you had to choose just one option out of the three, which would you choose? For this question, we also offered an option of other, but it was not selected by any team member. You can see that while there's not a huge difference in the responses. The most came in for the recommendation for a partial lengthening of the runway. Again, there are some differences in what teachers and administrators would choose if they had to choose one, and those are noted there on the screen. But it all leads back to the same conclusion. If you group the red bar and the teal-ish bar together. We see that 17 out of our 23 members who responded to the survey, or almost three quarters of our team's membership. Chose a response that lengthens the runway in some way. And note that this incorporates 10 out of the 11 teacher respondents. So combining the data from the graph we see on this slide and the graph we saw on the previous slide. It seems clear that the grading and assessment team is most in support of the recommendation they made after the April 25th meeting. To lengthen the runway in a few strategic areas. And to implement the rest of the parameters as written in the 20242025 grading and assessment guidelines. A revised version of the grading and assessment guidelines that clarifies which parameters are required and which parameters are optional for the 202425 school year has been created. In this version, the optional parameters are clearly highlighted in bright yellow. If the partial pause recommendation is adopted, this will be shared with course teams. And course teams will have the ability to resubmit their decision forms if they decide to change their minds on any of the parameters that have become optional. I want to also reiterate that course teams that are ready to implement all parameters are absolutely still encouraged and will be supported to do so. We know there are many course teams that have done a lot of work to get ready for this implementation. And they have our full support in continuing with that implementation. Thank you, and we will now open it to questions.
I have a quick question then. Thank you for the the information. I'm just curious, you mentioned that you're offering either the equidistance or the the standards based grading. I'm curious, how much, what percentage, do you know what percentage of our teachers are using standards based?
Currently, very few. I don't have the data right at my fingertips, but currently, most of our course teams have chosen the 50% to 100%.
Okay, yeah, my my concern there is is do you feel there's a challenge trying to accommodate both. Grading processes in our systems?
There certainly has been a bit of a challenge there and it's been a learning process. Even just having a full grasp on what Power Teacher can accommodate and do. We do understand that Power Teacher can do both. To implement a standards based grading scale in the Power Teacher gradebook, there is some required setup. So there is a little bit more work on the front end to do that. And I do believe we have course teams that are moving in that direction. But as this is new and something that a lot of our course teams haven't been doing in the past, most of them are sticking to the more traditional 50% to 100% for now.
Go ahead.
I have a whole slew. First of all, I just want to take a moment to thank you for breaking down the information with regard to teachers and how teachers voted versus how admin voted. That to me really illustrates a great deal. With regard to the collaborative efforts that went into this plan. And so I appreciate that because I think then we kind of get. We get to see that various perspectives and and values were factored into this recommendation for the partial. I'm calling it a partial pause, but I know that's not what it is. Can you give me the the word one more time?
I did use the term partial pause.
Yeah, that's fine. Partial lengthening.
Yeah, either way.
So thank you, that's super helpful to know. Can I just ask a couple of questions just to provide some more color for myself, so I have full understanding here? I'm really curious to know about the number of pilots that ran. How many teachers specifically were involved? Because you gave us that. That figure, I think it was like 96 teachers, 70 something courses. And then more curiously, I'm interested in the distribution at each school. So how many were piloted at Vernon Hills and how many were piloted at Libertyville?
Yes, that is a great question. So yes, it was 96 teachers representing 74 courses. And just as a reminder, for the pilot year, we did not require that a course team had to do this together. So we did have full course teams doing this together. We had some individual teachers and then we had some where where a part of a course team was trying it. And other others weren't, so we we had a whole. Array of different scenarios within that. I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but there were quite a few more pilot participants at Vernon Hills than at Libertyville. And I can get you those exact numbers, we have them somewhere. It was it was quite quite skewed toward toward Vernon Hills, but we did also have LHS participants.
So that was, is that because it was voluntary?
Yes. Yes, yes, it was, it was completely voluntary, yes, 100% voluntary.
Again, to reiterate, 96 teachers, but the majority were at Vernon Hills.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, interesting, thank you. And then also curious about the minimum requirement for updates per grading period. So my understanding from the presentation was that there would basically be two required updates, one at the midpoint, let's call that midterm. And one at the end of the term, is that correct?
So not exactly.
Okay.
Can you explain the P1, P2, P3?
Yes, so within each semester, there are four progress periods. So where many schools do quarters, we're almost doing eighths. So in semester one, a P1, P2, P3, P4. And they occur about a month apart. So at each progress period, the P1, P2, et cetera. The right, the guidelines state that at that moment, so that's four times per semester. At the moment of that progress period end, a grade must be fully up to date. So everything that has been assigned and returned, fully graded as if this student is now going to leave the course, what would be their final grade? In the midpoints of those, then we're asking for an additional update. That doesn't have to be as precise as the as the progress period update. But that there needs to be some update of a student's progress. So what that equates to is eight times per semester.
And it has to be quantifiable updates, meaning like a percentage, a number, a grade, it couldn't take the shape of a qualitative.
So we are asking for a quantitative measure, however. This is one of the the things that has been a bit nuanced as we've we've worked with the new system and worked with the gradebook. There are many grades that can go into the gradebook to show progress. That don't necessarily calculate into the student's grade. So many teachers who are doing say 100% summative assessments for their grades. They still put coursework or formative assessment grades in the gradebook to show. A student where they stand and what their progress is. But those aren't being calculated into the student's current grade for the course.
In some, because you may have formatives, but you may not have any summatives to speak of.
Correct, exactly, yes.
So if a teacher is using 20% formative, you're still, you have an outlier of 80% that hasn't been accounted for because a summative hasn't been given yet.
Correct, yes.
I guess, and I I don't mean to be on the dance floor with this, but how do you as a grading and assessment team and just as a school community manage expectations with teachers? Updating grades into the gradebook to give kids and families the most accurate sense of what's actually happening? Because I I know I ran into this when I was in the classroom and. You know, it never painted the full picture when we were working with that, and I use the 8020 model, it's funny. There would be, there would be some parents who sometimes a test would come and it it appeared to blow up the grade. I'm just curious how, if has there been any discussion about managing that?
Yes, definitely, and it's something that something that we've talked about a lot, something that we've worked with our MTSS teams on. Because ultimately, this this was a partnership with our MTSS team to come up with these, this specific parameter. And in in the original iteration of the guidelines, we didn't have as many updates. And our MTSS team said, if we're really wanting to monitor, if we're really trying to stay on top of how kids are doing in their classes, we need more updates. So we worked with them to come up with a system that we thought would work. We. We, we, this is going to be a new practice for for many of our teachers, so we know that there's learning involved there. And I think there's also a lot of learning with with the gradebook, which as I was just talking about. So I think we we do have places where there's there's some professional learning we can provide to help that. I think though, ultimately, to better answer your actual question. The I think that what's important about the the gradebook updates is the spirit of it. And while we do plan to have specific dates to help keep a structure. It's more around the spirit of communicating as much as we can with our students and their parents and guardians. When we've received feedback from from parents and guardians. Communication has been one of the top priorities, knowing where to find information, how to find information. And even knowing how often to look for information. So this is is partially also in response to our our parent and guardian community saying, we want to know more, please give us more. So how we will monitor it. Our our department chairs are amazing partners in all of this work to us. They've had a big job in kind of monitoring what various course teams are doing. And throughout the pilot, it's been especially a challenge with with many course teams kind of on different pages. So we we have asked our department chairs to to monitor that. And 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 help teachers in in places where where there there is a struggle.
Thank you, and I I apologize, I have like a whole slew, does anyone mind if I?
I would like to ask a question about timing, if we could, since we're talking about timing, just for clarity. For parents who may be watching and reading. There are four progress periods in each semester. Each progress period equates to about six weeks, six weeks, right?
More like four to five.
Four to five.
Monthish.
So if we are updating their grade, I mean, just nuts and bolts.
Yep.
Updating their grades every two weeks, a student should have something accurate as far as what their progresses in a coursework.
Yes, correct.
Every two weeks.
Yep.
We can guarantee that, okay, that's what I, I mean, I.
Yep.
Sometimes we get too bogged down. Every two weeks, a student knows where they are.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have more. I'm sorry, and I don't mean to hog the mic or talk for the sake of talking. I have constituents who've come to me with very specific questions about this and I want to make sure I'm getting it right. Students, the presentation said students may be asked to complete tasks that show retake preparedness. Alarm bells go off in my head when I hear this because. I think, I think we know that most of our students are honest, hardworking, wonderful. Concerned scholars, truly, they're trying, they want to do the best they can. But certainly, and I think all of us can speak to this, well, maybe not all of us, but some of us can speak to us as as young people. We overcommitted and underprepared for things, or we thought we were ready and we weren't. And we never had a second chance at retakes and whatnot, and we just had to live with it. But we have our students here who are being told they may have an opportunity to retake. I guess I I struggle with this idea that students may be asked to complete tasks and that it's not somehow requisite. Because it incentivizes a student perhaps to come less prepared for their assessments. And I know as an educator, that's a really difficult thing to manage. Who took the assessment, who has to make up the assessment, who's retaking it? It's a lot, it's a lot of paper, it's a lot of data management. So I would love to see personally as a board member. Some accountability on behalf of our students. If in fact they qualify for a retake, what is being done in order to say, yeah, like you earned the retake, let's do it?
Yes, so currently, we have varied practices on this throughout the district. And it the grading and assessment team made a very specific strategic choice. To not change the way reassessments are done right now. So so there are varied practices, however, course teams do have to have the same practice. So yes, there are going to be course teams where there is incredibly strict criteria. Course teams that have no criteria and course teams that fall in the middle. And right now, we are, right now, the way the guidelines are written, that is allowable in our practices. As long as course teams are doing the same things. So our team. I mentioned that we have very long involved conversations. Every period comma capital letter of the guidelines. Was gone over to such a degree that there were some things that we had to agree needed to wait. In order to do the 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 things that that we agreed upon were the most important correctly and as well as we could, there were some things that had to be set aside. as well as we could, there were some things that had to be set aside, and making adjustments to the reassessment parameters that were already in place was one of those things. So that may be something, as we continue to revise and make the guidelines better and better each year, that may be something that we revisit to get some more consistency across the district, and it's a place where we get a lot of questions, because there's a lot of openness. So we've tried very hard to leave room for teacher choice, for course team choice, and to really allow teachers to create practices in their classroom that are best for their content, best for their students. So reassessment is one of those areas that we've left very loose for now, but we do see a path forward where we might tighten that up to help bring some consistency and to answer some of the questions that we are getting about what is allowable, because right now it is quite loose, and so for teachers who are looking for guidance, there's not as much there. So that's a future, that's a future thing that we will tackle.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up on that, what we're talking about? So one thing I noticed about Art, your graph, and I appreciate you separating it by teacher admin, but there really is truly no majority. I mean, it's the most of 23, but there's no rising majority of thought. Was there, so we also could not, I'm asking the question, just, I know some districts use a cut score for reassessments and reevaluation, was there no consensus on something, just a minimum cut score before a reassessment is allowed? Is that something that?
It's not something that is in the current version of the guidelines.
I know it's not in the current guidelines, was it a part of the discussion?
I am sure at some point, we talked about it, but we did really table the whole reassessment discussion in order to do the other pieces of this well. I am, it did, things came up all the time, so I am sure that it's been discussed, but not at length, not in any depth yet.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that same topic? So the point of the reassessment, reassessments have been going on long before this.
Yes.
It's not new to this grading and assessment.
Correct.
Plan. So the point here, though, is what you're attempting to do is getting course teams to at least be consistent amongst themselves, so you don't have different reassessment policies.
Correct.
In the same set of classes, the same set of courses, is that correct?
Yes, that, yes, that's exactly right, and we absorbed the current reassessment parameters into the grading and assessment guidelines, so that we had all of the grading and assessment related things in one place. So we kind of just absorbed them into our guidelines, we didn't change them, aside from we are asking for more course team consistency.
Okay, so I suppose then we'll just wait for updates as we roll out and kind of pop that to a priority within our minds, if we want to hear what's going on with that. And then I just have a couple more questions, I'm so sorry, two, promise. What percentage of our course teams are implementing in 24, 25 approximately, and what percentage are planning to wait till 25, 26?
I don't have that data in front of me, and we don't actually, I think, know fully yet, because we haven't made a final decision on whether we will do a partial pause or something else. So course teams have all submitted decision forms, they were due on May 8th. So because of the way that the timing happened, course teams went forward and submitted decision forms. So all of those have been in. So with that, with the original process laid out, there was no option, everybody was implementing. So right now, if we were to look at it, it would look like everybody is implementing. If we decide to do this partial pause or any other thing that is not full implementation, at that point, there will be an opportunity for course teams to come back together and make revisions, because we do understand that there were course teams who weren't quite ready, who made a decision because there was a deadline and they had to make a decision. But if those course teams decide, we want more time to learn, more time to think this through, more time to decide, and we're going to take the 24, 25 school year to do that, then we will allow them to resubmit their decisions. So it's something that we don't quite know yet.
Okay. And my final question is the question I like, I'm kind of become known for asking, but what are our peer districts that are already using equidistant grading? So I think sometimes it's really important to kind of keep these conversations in perspective of what's happening in the larger educational world, and for so many of the things that we're looking at right now, they feel new, and to a degree, they feel even, you know, a little bit scary because change is hard. But I think what I'm really interested to hear is, who do we know nearby, who already uses equidistant grading, who already uses a more standardized version of their grading and assessment?
Yeah, and I don't have a full list, although I will tell you, that is something that we looked into, especially at the very outset of this process. So in the 22, 23 school year, as we were just beginning our work, we looked at a lot of area schools, and I don't have all that information in front of me. I know that Stevenson has been doing grading similar to this for quite some time. Mundeline has recently put a process into place. There are many, many schools and districts that have either moved this way already or are on their way to this, and I can gather that information and give it to you more specifically. I just need to go back to some of the information we gathered earlier in the process.
I would love to hear. I know it's not a new thing, and I know that 11 years ago, I was working in Chicago Public Schools when we were doing this, so we were using equidistant grading, and we were using more consistent percentages across grade level or across course teams. So I, for one, am excited about these changes, I think they are best practice and they best serve our students. I'm looking forward to hearing about more of the information that you're going to be bringing to us. Thank you so much for putting this together, Charlotte and Tilly.
Absolutely, yes.
Any others?
I do have, yeah, I do have another quick, can we go back to slide 16? Please, thanks. You know, I'm an illustrative person, I need a picture, no, you, on the other one, one more.
I got it.
Can you just describe for those that are here, what does it look like for a team that does need to reach a consensus on a grading formula and grading categories, but not to use this, what does that look like?
So, in the past, we may have had course teams or even individual teachers, because this didn't, this didn't in the past have to be a course team decision. They might have categories in their gradebook for homework, quizzes, labs, tests, any projects, any number of papers, any number of things that we can come up with that we assign students, they might have been categorized that way. Or we have teachers who are not using categories at all. So in moving to two categories that are quite broad, coursework, summative, that is very new for some of our teachers, and even the use of categories is new for some of our teachers, and that is a huge reason why this was one of the places we said we could use a pause here for teachers who aren't ready, because there is much more learning to be done for teachers who haven't done it this way in the past. So we want to be able to provide that learning opportunity. So what the recommendation is, is forget what the parameters say, your course team needs to decide on something, and it needs to be the same. If you don't want to use categories at all, that's okay, although we're encouraging that because it's going to happen, if you want to use different categories for now. We've also had some questions arise as to subcategories. In my summative bucket, can I have different subcategories? And so those are questions that our team now is also grappling with, and how do we manage that, and how do we best keep consistency while allowing course teams to do what they need to do to give proper grades?
But what is consensus on grading formulas? So they have to have their grading formula as far as 0 to 100 or 40 to 100, that's what they have to have?
That's a grading scale. So a grading, so a grading formula would be, if we are going to say homework is worth 20% of the grade, quizzes are worth 30%, labs are worth 20%, and tests are worth 30%. So that formula, and so everybody needs to reach a consensus there on a course team, even if it doesn't fall into the categories that the parameters suggest.
Okay. I had some other that I, but they were, I've attached them to the other attachment in the presentation, which was the 2024, 25 grading and assessment guidelines. Is that something that we're going to be, so my questions are kind of in relation to that, is that something that we could bring up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's see. So it was linked in, you want the original one or the revised with the highlights?
Revised with the highlights.
Okay, so slide 21, okay, can we pull, can we go to slide 21 and pull that link up?
Yeah.
Yeah, beautiful.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Now, can I just say, for those watching, this is a document that was created for teachers. This is written in teacher lingo, and one of our next steps is to provide something that students and parents can find more accessible than this.
Well, now that makes sense.
Yes.
Because that's not how I read that.
Okay.
And of course, that's why I went to this one, this asked the question. I'm going to do it really quick.
Yes, yes.
Where you have summative assessments as 80 to 100, assuming that we agree, assuming that we follow through with the partial pause, final would be under the summative assessment. If a course team chooses to have a final, whatever percentage up to the 20% will be within that category of summative assessment.
Not exactly, it really falls into its own category. So this can be a little tricky to process the math, because the 80, let's say we chose 80, 20, that adds up to 100, and now we're going to include a final that's 20, that adds up to 120.
Right.
But it really doesn't. So we would need to think about progress grades versus the semester grade. So if we are doing, for progress grades, 80% summative, 20% formative, then we're doing that throughout the semester. At the end of this semester, those two things together go into a bucket, and that bucket maybe is 80%. And now we've got a final in another bucket that's 20%. We do have some pictures of this, some graphics, if we scroll, here are, these are just some examples of how this might work, and so it's really about just thinking about the progress grades separate from that final semester grade. Does that help a little?
You know, and I'm realizing that now, this is something that the teach, course teams are going to get together and figure out. It didn't make sense to me, but now I understand why it didn't make sense to me, because I'm not a teacher in high school and understanding that.
Yes.
But I guess my main thing that I wanted to get to, and I speak as a parent now of a just college graduate and somebody who finished his first year, and I don't want to question what's going on in the committee, I value the committee and their response, but when I see that there's not really this resounding majority, I'm wondering if my concerns are concerns that you're grappling with. We know that 90% of our students want to go on to college, and I've just seen my first year college student come back, and I guess, if we know that's where our students want to go, how much of what is happening at the next level is reflective of what we're recommending? Because I know hard deadlines are a reality in college, there is no lateness, there is no, that's just the reality, and I've got one at home that has to take a math class over the summer, I'm sure he's not happy that I'm going to say it because of the hard deadlines, you know? So we know that that's where our students want to go, I understand best practices, I'm not here to question, but I feel like I do have to question, because our students have told us they want to be successful at the next level, and is this what they're going to be seeing? How much of that conversation is taking place in the committee? And how much, you know, what is happening?
All the time, all the time. That's why, that's why one sentence that we write in the guidelines takes us a three-hour meeting, because we are back and forth with the question, how are we best preparing our students? How are we best doing right by our students where they are now, which is high school? And what are the most equitable, fair, consistent ways that we can ensure that when we give our students a grade, it is reflective of what they know and can do academically? So those are the questions that we grapple with every day. This is part of why we stand very firm on the idea that our work is not done. The 2024, 25 grading and assessment guidelines are just that, 2024, 2025, and our committee work will not be finished, because we got that out there. This is a continued learning process for everyone on the committee and everyone in our midst. So I absolutely hear and understand those questions, we ask the same questions.
Yes, I have a question. How big a departure is it right now in our grading practice, going to eight times reporting a year? Like, how often are our teachers reporting now?
There has been no, no minimums set in the past. So for some teachers, that may be actually less than what they're already doing, for some it will be more, but in the past, there really haven't been very firm guidelines on when, although we do have, you know, the progress period, so that's kind of a point.
And that's been around for a little while.
Here's another thing that's been around forever, and that's weekly eligibility reports.
I was just going to ask.
Right, so the reality is, we've had the expectation, I don't know, two decades, maybe three decades, maybe my entire career, I guess I don't remember that far, but that a teacher creates an eligibility grade. And so really, the reality is, the expectation is that a teacher always know whether a student is passing or not. Now, that doesn't mean the expectation is that they're always being asked to update their gradebook, they just probably know, okay, this kid is passing or this kid isn't. So there's always been that expectation, now we're just putting to kind of guidelines, you need to have that change happen in your gradebook every two and a half, every two, two and a half, three weeks, but depending on how long the progress is.
Okay, that's, I was going to ask about that, because, and also, that's not just IHSA, is that like theater and?
Well, so, it's an IHSA bylaw, right? So we're kind of more bound to it in the IHSA, if a kid is ineligible, then they can't participate. The other areas, we don't have those tight kind of guidelines, but what we do is run eligibility reports, and then we can use that as a way to hold, help hold kids accountable. A director might go to a student and say, hey, I'm seeing on your eligibility report that you're failing two classes. The fine arts don't have that same participation rule, so that director's not going to say, so you can't practice your cello this week, you know what I mean?
Sure.
You can't come to the orchestra concert, because really, that's part of the curriculum anyway, and that's actually a grade in the, so to refuse the kid access to that doesn't even make sense. So we use those kinds of eligibility reports to help inform and help hold kids accountable, but they're different than the IHSA bylaw.
Okay. And then I just have a comment. Standards-based grading is a huge departure from what teachers have traditionally done. Standards-based grading is a huge departure from what teachers have traditionally done. So I am not in any way surprised to hear that that is the less often chosen path. Do you, I guess I'm looking at the, the top administration here. In the back of your head, are you thinking to yourselves right now, this is a good foot in the door? Like, we really want to move everybody towards standard-based grading? Or is it our philosophy that some courses, it works beautifully and in other courses, it doesn't work as well? Are we okay continuing down a path of having two separated systems, some standard-based and some not?
I don't have a preconceived notion that it has to be all standards-based. I think that the closer, the more often we can give students feedback on their performance as it relates to standards, the more likely they are to be able to look at their portfolio and see where their strengths and weaknesses are. So I would always be encouraging course teams to write their assessments so that students understood if I got number four wrong, what standard am I deficit in? But how we translate that to a grade book, I think that that would be something that course teams and department chairs, and you know, as it gets easier to manipulate the grade book that way, I think more and more people may be interested in it. But my first hope would be that our classroom assessments align with standards and skills.
Okay.
If I could just add something to this, not to deflect from the question, but I, one of the things that we have established through this committee is it's really hard to make must statements. Because every time we talk about an assessment, each one of us goes to a specific course or a specific department. I'm a math teacher, so when we start talking about assessments, I go straight to math course. And I, and I think about quizzes, I think about homework, I think about tests, right? And everybody does something different. But when we sit down as a committee and there are voices from all different departments, the conversation quickly gets muddled because, well, in woodshop, we have four projects and they're do, they're, they happen for, it's hard to talk about. And so when you were talking about like tasks to be done to reassess, well, that makes sense for a math teacher. Come in for help and I'll check you off and then you can go re, that doesn't necessarily make sense for a foods class. So it's, it's such a more complicated question at a high school curriculum because it's so diverse. So I, I wanted to say that. And, and then the other thing that I would say is, and this is, this is not a statement about where we might go, but some of these, these conversations we're having are different if this, if the district is a standard, if it's Stevenson and it is a standards-based grading district. But right now, we're living in kind of two different worlds. And so you start talking about lateness. Well, lateness doesn't really make sense if your grade is exceed standards, approaching standards meets, because then lateness doesn't, it doesn't change whether I'm approaching standards. It doesn't change whether I'm exceeding standards. But if you're thinking in terms of points and you're thinking, well, if you're late, then I should take off a few points, right? Because that's the world and that's accountability. When you miss a deadline, you have to take a hit for it. That makes a lot more sense when you're talking about points and percentages. But when you're talking about standards, that doesn't really matter then, it doesn't really impact whether I'm approaching the standard. If I'm a few days late, I still, I still exceed it or I don't. You know what I mean? So the conversations get tricky. We're, we're doing, I think, the wise thing and not forcing one direction or the other, but it just makes the conversations harder in a lot of these different little subcategories.
That's exactly what I would like to support. I think we're doing the wise thing by not saying one size fits all, let the teacher teams figure out what works for them. Okay. Other questions? Lisa's been sitting back waiting.
Well, I really respect my colleagues who are teachers and I'm glad that you sort of led the, the questions because I think your experience is very valuable. I want to thank Jenny in Charlotte and everybody on the grading and assessment team for an excellent presentation. And you've been doing some really complicated detailed work and I want to recognize that. This is just a more rudimentary question, but I'm wondering what support is available and has been available to the course teams when they have a question or need to understand how technology will support something that they're considering? What, what does that look like?
So when we rolled out the guidelines back in February, we, one thing we did was we put out a question form. And so, so teachers had the opportunity to submit this form with any questions. And we've turned that into somewhat of an FAQ document that gets updated as new questions come in. So there was a flood of them initially and then it backed off and we, we haven't had any more recently, but we continue to monitor it. So that's one way that, that we've tried to respond to needs. We also again are, are using our amazing department chairs to kind of field some of those questions and, and, and help their teams with, with things they need help with. We've done a lot of technology work with Kate Isabella, our, I can never remember her exact title, but she's a technology guru of D128. That's her new title. So she's done just a huge amount of help with the, the grade book process and what will work. And she's worked with, with many individual teachers as we have kind of figured out what will work and what won't, what can't we do at the same time as something else. So there's been a lot of that. Our instructional coaches have offered numerous types of professional learning here in the spring. They've, everything from, I know they did one just on, on let's understand the guidelines and, and prepare for making the decisions. What do we have to decide? What do we have to do? And, and there's been so many more, which, which I, I can't remember all of them. Oh yeah, Power School sandboxes to try out different systems and to see how, how different grading formulas might work, et cetera. So there's been a lot. And our instructional coaches continue to, to plan for future professional learnings. We have numerous instructional coaches on the grading and assessment team, so they are absolutely invaluable and continue to plan other things. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. I think you guys covered a lot of questions I had, but I just want to clarify a couple of things. I'm not an educator, so some of these concepts don't come as easily. If you don't mind going back to slide nine in the presentation, I just want to summarize my understanding. So we've got these four categories of parameters. And I think what I understood is all of the, the assessment and accuracy, this is talking about that grading formula of what you, you want to kind of say, what percentage goes to your final first? And then the rest of it, you want to break out based on tests and homework and whatever. That, you're all nodding, so okay, I'm, I'm on, on track with that. The second is absolutely critical, yes. The only thing I'm going to wear my parent hat on for a second here is when it comes to grades in your very last progress report just before final. If those grades get added on the Friday before your final, the kid doesn't really have a lot of time to figure out what to do. And then your stakes on a final go really high. So if you have a student trying to get an A in that class, that, that can be hard to achieve. So maybe you want to give some more time there, at least in the last progress report of that semester. But you've, you've got that grading scale, I think is more on the actual grade itself, right? I didn't quite understand the NE or the 40%. If you could just take a moment and explain that.
Yes, definitely. So the first goal with the grading scales was to use equidistant grading scales so that in a typical zero to 100 scale, you have 59 percentage points that become F. And the rest of them have about 10 points. So the whole idea of the equidistant scale is that each letter grade gets the same amount of points within the scale. So that's the reasoning behind moving, essentially moving the floor of the grade to 50. So basically 50 is the new zero, basically that. Now, we had some feedback from our teachers, some pretty strong feedback toward the beginning of this work, that there was a level of discomfort with awarding 50% to an assignment that had never been turned in, never been attempted. So we developed the, and we didn't develop it, we, don't act like I made this up, I didn't make this up. Let me just write a book and, and go off into the sunset. No, I, we, we looked at some models. And so the, the model for the no evidence, so it gives, there's, there's nothing between 40 and 50. There's 40 and then the next thing is 50. From 50 to 100, it's continuous. The 40 is reserved for assignments that students never attempted. And the original version of this was NA for no attempt, but that got confusing because it also stands for not applicable. So we changed it to no evidence. So basically this is saying there's no evidence, I can't give the student a grade because I have nothing to grade. And that equates to a 40% in the grade book. And this was so that teachers had something different to denote an assignment that never got turned in versus an assignment that got turned in but earned a 50%.
Okay. Does this then address where some teachers give a test out of 100 and some give a test out of 10, where you might get one wrong and suddenly you have a B?
Yes.
Versus you get one wrong and you might still have an A?
If we're talking about straight points, then no. If you give a 100-point test and, or a 100-question test and they're all worth one point, then you have more, then if you miss one, you still get a 99 on a 10-point test or a 10-question test if you, and they're all worth a point. If you miss one, you get a 90. So that is, that is, that's going to be a nuance of each assignment.
Yeah, I mean, I get the assignment, but I, there are, there's actually tests that are offered, like a midterm test that may be out of 10 points in some classes. And just, it can really mess with kids' grades. If, if you make a single mistake, you suddenly have a B versus if it was 100 points. Just something, one of those things that leads to, you know, stress in the student's life, if you will, that if you don't mind kind of adding to your list of things, again, wearing a parent hat, you're not a board member hat necessarily.
Okay.
And then the last thing is reassessment, which I understand, I think practical approach, don't change it if it doesn't have to right now. But where I think I just need some clarity is if you have a course team that says we are ready to go forward, do they have to do all four of these bullets? Or can they say, I'm ready with the first bullet, but not with the, I'm not ready for the second? Or is it sort of an all or nothing package?
The grading and assessment team's recommendation is only, the grading and assessment team's recommendation for the partial pause is there are only two things that are becoming optional. So that is those. Two things that are becoming optional, the grading formula and the idea behind lateness of assigned work not being a part of a grade calculation. That is, that is the recommendation. So, so no, a course team cannot, based on the recommendation, a course team cannot pick and choose what they're ready for and, and what they're not. That was part of the reason we did a pilot year. And we did have teachers on course teams in the pilot who, who didn't fully implement everything, or teachers who didn't sign up for the official pilot, but were implementing some of these things and so doing part of them. But it was kind of the initial purpose of the pilot year to, to start trying these things and to, for those teachers not quite ready to go full on, they certainly had the, the option to implement some.
Okay. So then besides these two things in orange, all other measures need to be implemented across the board?
Yes, that is the recommendation we are making. And, yes, and, and that has not been fully decided, but that's the recommendation we are making. And I want to go back to the reasoning of that. So it, it came down to, to the idea of what, what areas of the guidelines will more learning help? And the grading formula was a huge one. And it seems like it's just one thing, but the grading formula encompasses a lot of newness for some of our teachers. So we, as the, the team, determined these things based on, is there more learning that will help our teachers be more ready a year from now? There are certain things in the guidelines that we said, there's really not more learning in terms of how. Implementing a 50 to 100 grade scale, we have teachers who agree with it and love it and we have teachers who don't. But it's not something that we need more learning on. It's, it's, it's mathematical and the grade book does it for you. So more learning wasn't going to move a needle on that. So we chose the things where we felt we were getting a lot of questions and even in our team maybe didn't fully understand when we went back to it to answer questions, oh, what did we mean? We need to revisit that. We need to understand that better so that we can communicate it better. And areas where we knew we could provide some learning resources so that teams can be ready to implement.
And that's actually built in. If you opt out, then you're going to commit to
Correct.
Getting release time or some staff development.
Yes, that is correct.
All right. And then just last question is when we, when I hear the word guidelines, sometimes it's, that's just a guideline. You don't necessarily have to follow anything in it. So, but I don't think that's what you're doing. You're trying to give everyone flexibility because what is applicable in a math class is not necessarily applicable in a woodshop and et cetera. And you're trying to give them a framework under which they can operate, be creative to what they're teaching, but they have to hit certain expectations.
That's exactly right. And if you look at the, the guidelines document, you'll see that it, it's full of a lot of information, some of which doesn't give any type of directive, but more explains a philosophy or a belief. And then there are certain things and they are marked in the guidelines, they are marked. This is a decision point that a course team needs to make and, and, and here it is. And then there's other places that may not be a, a decision, but that are course teams must, course teams will. But it's all encompassed in, in one big document, which is why we called it guidelines.
Thank you and thank you for your patience answering my questions.
And I'm going to ask the dumb question just to make sure. This is based on, this is a district guideline, right? So if there's a course team that is both LHS and Vernon Hills, they will come together and make that decision. I know our, I know some of our curriculum is different, but if the course team exists in both buildings, then they will be making the same decision?
The guidelines are district-wide, but decisions are being made by building course teams. So the Algebra I course team at LHS might have different decisions than the Algebra I course team at Vernon Hills.
Is there a move to more uniformity in the future?
Could be, yeah. There, there could be, there could be.
I mean, you would certainly get those teams together every now and then to talk about stuff, but I
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have a mechanism to support them. Because right now, your time is in buildings and a lot of, of moving parts within those buildings. So you'd have to have a mechanism to do that, but it could be part of future work with that mechanism and support.
And with that said, we do have course teams that have, that have chosen to, to work together on things, but, but no, it, it is not a requirement.
All right. Any other questions? I'd like to thank the committee. It's a lot of tough work and thank you for responding to a request that was made very recently. So that was a lot of quick So that was a lot of quick work, and I appreciate that. All right, we're going to move on to item B, the artificial intelligence, I can't even say it, so there you have it.
AI.
Artificial Intelligence Committee Report. And you'll note that later, we're going to talk about policy, and there is actually a policy change that reflects AI.
Great, Dr. Colentes and I are going to walk us through this presentation. I am starting the presentation as freshman biology teacher, Mr. John Gilliam. This is my student, freshman biology student, Tom Colentes, he's an overachiever, doing a great job. Tom, thanks for being here tonight.
Straight A student.
Listen, here's what I'd like you to do as a part of our next application on our current cell unit. What I'd like you to do is create a presentation, Tom, young Tom, that shows that you know the various components of a cell and the specific functions of those components. Create a presentation that shows that you know the components of the cell and what those components do, what are their functions?
So if I was a freshman student, even a year ago in the fall, I would have gone to Google and Google would have gave me resources, I would have used my textbook, and I would have gone to the library, and I would have used my class notes, and I would have found that information. Google would have pointed me to different resources where I would have looked at it. But because I'm a freshman today in a post chat G P T world, I'm going to go to my Chromebook and say, what are the important structures in a human cell? And what important function does each play? And then Chat G P T is not going to point me to resources, it's going to explain the answer to me. And my teacher wants not just me to get the important parts of a cell, but also wants me to create a presentation. So if I were a student a year ago as a freshman, I would go to Google, I would write my notes, I would get all of this information. Then I'd go to Google Slides, or I'd go to Canva, or I would go to Slide Carnival, and I would work to develop a presentation. Now, because I am a freshman in a post chat G P T world, I will go and I'm just going to highlight that and do a Command C. I'm going to go to a different site called Gamma AI. Oh, Dan's got, we got to show the, the home audience. So we go to Gamma AI, and remember, both of these are free. And, and Gamma AI, I'm going to just paste in my text here. So I'm going to, whoops. Oops, Dan, I hit a misfire, I gotta go back to my, I accidentally hit delete instead of.
These things happen in.
Fail, young Tom.
Yes.
That's because you're a freshman.
I am a freshman and still working on my, my small motor skills. And copy that in the box. Okay, and then down at the bottom, I'm going to ask it to create a presentation as my teacher asked me to do. And I will hit that. I don't want a detailed presentation, this is freshman biology, I'm just going to do medium. And I am going to tell it that it is for students and professionals in biology and life sciences. But I'm going to tell it to down here, use, use blue and orange, because those are our school colors. And then I want images that are AI created. So I'm just going to have it, I don't want to spend time going to the internet to find images. I'll just ask it to create its own images, and then I'll hit continue. And my teacher likes purple, so I'm going to use this theme here, and we'll generate that. So what John, as my traditional teacher, would have given me an assignment that might have taken two days, a day to do all my research and a day to put my slides together. I, as a young freshman student, can develop a extremely professional and academically accurate slideshow in about five minutes. So these images were never, ever designed before, the AI created those images based on what I asked it to do. You see that it's using blue and orange colors as I asked it to do. You'll see that it is creating not just the information, but developing that information in a way that I can present it to my classmates. And what's different, obviously, about AI than like Google is Google will give me a list of resources, but AI resources, some of the technology with AI, not only will it help me create something, but I can give it feedback and it'll refine its work based on the feedback that I give it. So when this, when Chat G P T really hit the public consciousness last December, it sent shockwaves through not just industries, but the educational community as well. Because there was a tool now that really, it's not an overstatement to say is a game changer and could potentially disrupt not just businesses, but how we do education with students. So District one twenty eight, we didn't want to wait for the federal government or the State Board of Education to create guidance for us. We worked together with our staff and our students to create an AI committee. And the, we'll talk about what that committee is doing in a moment. But just very quickly, AI, as most people know, is artificial intelligence. And it, what it really does now where we're at is it is very good at identifying what does an intelligence person, an intelligent person, how would an intelligent person respond to this prompt? And it is extremely accurate at generating responses that we would recognize as an intelligent response. To do this, it's drawing on very large data sets, it's identifying patterns, and it's automating very complex processes. And this allows it to assist us in a wide range of tasks, from healthcare to education. Which is it, that one? I am not the artificial intelligence, so I need direction on how to use it. You could, why don't you just roll this? Yeah. There are generally three types of AI. Narrow AI is where we live right now as a society. This is AI that is called weak AI or narrow AI. And it is really dedicated to excelling at a specific task in a specific domain. So if you think of Siri or you think of Alexa, that is narrow AI. But we are moving as a society towards general AI, which is called strong AI. General AI would possess the ability not just to perform in a specific domain, but it would obsess, it would possess the ability to learn and to understand and apply its intelligences across multiple domains, essentially mimicking human intelligence. When we talk to the experts in the technology field, the optimists say we will have general AI in about five years, the pessimists say fifteen to twenty years. But within a child's lifetime born today, general AI will be here most likely in their teenage and high school years. And so as a, as a committee that was working on AI, we were focused very much on the rules of narrow AI, and the guidance that we're going to talk about is for that world. When general AI hits, we will all, as a society, have to learn how to manage that. Super AI is very hypothetical. This is the doomsday scenario when these machines actually become much smarter than humans on a scale not just a little, but exponential, and basically become our overlords, which is why I always say please and thank you to Chat G P T. So how does AI at its, and, and we are in the infancy, right? AI is never going to be worse, it's never going to be dumber than it is today at this moment. And it's disrupting businesses, and every industry is, is either using it or figuring out how to use it. In education right now, we're seeing it in four broad areas, in AI powered tutoring systems. So ways that students, adults can interact with it to get answers to complex problems. Khan Academy has created Khan Migo. Khan Migo is an AI that works with students, and it doesn't give them an answer, but it provides them guidance the way a tutor would give them guidance to help them solve problems. So Khan Migo in my world is a good AI. Chat G P T that provides you the straight answer as a teacher, I would say is a bad AI, right? Sorry, Chat G P T, don't take that personally. Intelligent content creation is the idea of, as a teacher, if I need to teach a class and I have twenty seven different students of different language and skill abilities, I can say to Chat G P T or another AI, provide me resources at different lexiile levels on judicial review. And please provide that for an eleventh grade high school audience in the state of Illinois that is aligned to the Common Core standards. And it would create different readings, all on the same topic, that I could then pass out to students of different lexiile levels in my class. What would have taken me weeks as a teacher to identify sources, create those sources, maybe adapt those sources into different lexiile levels, I can now do very quickly using AI. AI is moving into assessment where it is not only assessing right or wrong on a test, but able to analyze your thinking patterns and why you are making the mistakes that you are, and provide you with grading and feedback that is very detailed, very quick. So in a world where sometimes students have to wait for a week or two for essay feedback from a, a teacher who has a hundred and twenty five essays to write, new AI systems are able to provide personalized, customized feedback to students in seconds. Oops, sorry. So with these new technologies, any new technology will provide us with new opportunities, but also new problems and can be used in good or in difficult ways. When we look at AI, especially in education, there's four main areas that we have to be concerned about. One is that the data sets are biased. So these systems are drawing their answers through data sets. But those data sets are created by humans. And so they're only as, they will reflect the bias that are in the data that the humans created. So if you ask Chat G P T who the all time leading scorer in international football is, it will tell you Cristiano Ronaldo. And then when you say, well, what about female football players? It will say, oh, Abby Wambach scored a hundred and eighty four goals. And then you say, well, how many did Cristiano Ronaldo score? And it'll say a hundred and fifteen. So if a student uses Chat G P T to get answers, we see a bias towards a male athlete being the all time scorer rather than the true representative of the answer, which is a female. The problem is, we don't always know how these data sets are biased. And they're in, built into these algorithms that are drawing on massive amounts of data. So we have to be careful when we're using these, especially if we're using them as examples of knowledge. Privacy is also an issue because we have FERPA laws that we have to follow to protect our student privacy. If we are uploading information into an AI, all of that data then is owned technically by that company. And so we have to be concerned about who has access to that data and what that data could be used for on the backend. Ethics in education are pretty obvious. We need to be thinking all the time about where can AI be used as a tool to supplement student learning, but not as a device to supplant student learning. And when we are presenting work, when do we need to identify work that is created through our own human skills and intuitions versus work that is created with the assistance of an AI device and technology? Lastly, ownership of content is also a concern for us because when you utilize an AI, if I, as a student, utilize AI to create the most beautiful poem ever written in the history of humanity, who owns that poem? Is it OpenAI, the owner of Chat G P T? Is it Khan Academy, the owner of Khan Migo? Or is it me, Tom Colennis? Those things have to be decided in court, but it is a concern for us as an organization where we're producing materials with these tools. And discussions of who owns them is a very gray area legally right now. Okay?
Okay, we're going to move on to so what, now what? Tom did a good job of introing AI and its various forms and, and some of the things that we're considering. But now we want to talk a little bit about what our district has been doing, and we'll move into what a committee has done in terms of guidelines. So while tonight is the first, first board level discussion regarding AI, we've been checking boxes per se over the last few months for groundwork items that will help us move forward once the guidelines are in place across our system. For example, our I T departments and instructional departments have been working on this for quite some time, and they're currently looking at AI systems designed for schools. Like Tom said, some of them are good, some of them are bad relative to schools. A product like Chat G P T doesn't have some of the guardrails and functionality to ensure academic integrity and student safety. For example, many of our teachers, you've used Canva as a tool for presentations. It's, it's, it too is adding AI features and functionality that may allow us to phase out other products. Our humanities teachers are using a product, and they have been for years, called Turn It In to identify plagiarism within written assignments. Next year, through our budgeting process, we'll be purchasing Turn It In's AI version to apply in those humanity courses and anyone teaching writing. And finally, student privacy is of utmost importance. And as we navigate the rapidly evolving AI landscape, every decision we make will consider student privacy as its most important feature. Next, we've been encouraging professional learning for our staff. Our edX Teacher Institute Day offered several sessions in AI, for example. District administration has shared resources with staff through newsletters. Certain departments have spent time focusing on the issues. There are a lot of issues, of course, taking time and focus for our staff. But this is one more area that we need to provide important learning for our teachers. It's recently been said that, and said in part because of achievements like AI, that it's the best time ever to be a learner. How exciting it must be. It's also been said, though, for similar reasons, that it's the worst time to be a teacher. It's hard to manage all of these changes and at the pace that they are happening. And finally, most of the content of tonight's presentation comes from the work of an AI committee that was formed at the start of this year. And the challenge for that committee was to create a set of guidelines and follow up action steps that will ensure students and staff have a framework with which to make the most of, make the most of the many pros of this dynamic in changing technology while also creating a system mindful of the ethical and behavioral cons of it. Not an easy task. District one twenty eight already has an acceptable use of technology school policy. It takes into account the scope and applicability, ethical principles and governance and oversight. Our committee understood right off the bat that we did not need to recreate a separate AI policy. Our existing A U P provides the direction we need. But we did believe it was important to formally state our position and to recommend these guidelines for the use of AI. For example, let's consider the scope and application. Knowing that AI is everywhere, where are the specific areas and departments within a school that need language which shapes AI application? The obvious one, one we've talked about already tonight, is classroom instruction and student productivity within it. If a teacher asks a student to write an essay, how can AI be used or not used to, to support that task? But it goes further into areas like student services support and administrative tasks. Tom and I just today, we're talking to an assistant principal who is sharing an advancement of AI that could take all the constraints, all of the assignments, all of the student requests, and very quickly create a schedule, a master schedule that met most perfectly all of those different items. Something like that could save a lot of time and money. So how is it that we can create guidelines that are tight enough to define what is right and wrong, but loose enough to move through an ever-changing landscape? Here's a timeline of our committee's work. Our discuss, discussions relative to this committee and its work started over a year ago, around this time last year. The introduction of the committee and its tasks started in August. Actually, Tom and his building actually used it as part of their opening day theme, if I, if I recall correctly. And the committee worked through most of the fall with a draft being shared to building leadership and then to all staff in December. And we're happy to share that committee's work with you tonight. This is a list of your committee members, speaking of that work. The team consists of several students from both buildings. They brought a very valuable perspective to the conversation. And it also consisted of school teachers and building and district leadership. We want to thank everyone who gave up their own time for this important work. So what are the committee's recommendations? As the committee began its work this fall, four areas of focus emerged. As the committee began its work this fall, four areas of focus emerged. We think any change to a current policy should include these components. Responsible AI adaption, which includes governance structures that define deployment, monitoring and evaluation of AI systems. An investment in AI literacy and application training for staff. As we've already said, it's an exciting yet very complex road to navigate. Collaboration through developed partnerships between schools, policymakers and providers to ensure best practices. And finally, establishing guiding principles for AI usage like those we are going to share here tonight. This guiding statement that headlines are proposed guidelines is maybe the most important thought of the document because it's a statement of approval. AI is powerful, not going anywhere, and we can use it. But it also speaks to the responsibility we have to manage its use appropriately. And let me just, allow me to read this driving principle. Community High School District 128 authorizes the use of artificial intelligence technology to assist with academic and professional work and believes it is our responsibility to provide the following guidelines to promote its ethical and responsible use. These guidelines aim to ensure students and staff can harness this technology to its fullest potential while adhering to the principles of academic integrity and exemplary professional standards that guide our D128 teaching and learning practices. The guidelines break down into two main categories, guidelines for staff and guidelines for students. Each category consists of ethical and behavior and privacy beliefs, specific usage expectations, and several more general considerations. The ethical and privacy section for students focuses on the importance of always holding personally identifiable information secure. And Tom mentioned that a little bit earlier. As AI users are often prompted to enter information into AI systems, this expectation is of utmost importance. Usage expectations around academic integrity are often highlighted as the greatest concern for teachers and students alike. As a system, we are already dealing with cases of plagiarism and misrepresentation through AI systems. The section, this section of the guidelines memorializes what procedural safeguards and steps we are already implementing. In short, this section defines academic integrity in this context, sets the teacher as the lead in identifying the appropriate use in a course, and addresses specific expectations around plagiarism, coursework, assessments, and citations. Let me reiterate that it is important to empower the teachers to make these decisions. Let's take the example that we did already with the biology assignment for student Kalentes as he worked on it. A biology teacher may say to a student, you may not use AI to generate your ideas relative to the complex functions of the cell. Those are skills and knowledge, content knowledge that I want you to develop on your own. However, for my biology class, I'm not concerned with your skills in developing and engaging slideshow presentation. You may use gamma to create the presentation using your own generated thoughts. So teachers will have the flexibility and the responsibility to decide when and how AI is appropriately used. The last section for students relative to guidelines focuses on the importance of maintaining safe and appropriate educational environment. Without attempting to list all the harmful ways AI could be used to hurt others or harm the system, the guidelines caution students that a misuse of AI could amount to a violation of the student parent handbook and may result in disciplinary action. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. K to talk about staff expectations.
The staff expectations are very similar to students in that we want to make it very clear that it is the teacher who determines and communicates the appropriate use of the AI technology for their class and their assignments, and that we are expecting that students would check in with the teacher about their use. The thing that is very interesting, this is evolving so fast. When we started our work as a committee back in August, we tended to think of AI as a separate tool. So like you open up a toolbox and there would be like your Google search is your screwdriver and your, your spreadsheet is your hammer. But the thing is, is now, and we would think of like AI as like ChatGPT or a program sort of as a separate tool. And we started to think about regulating the use of that separate tool. What we now understand is that any digital software, it is going to have AI built into it. Or if it doesn't, it's going to be out of business or have it in its next update and installment, right? So we can't create a policy for every single piece of software and how to use AI embedded in that. And as AI, like, we don't have, for example, an electricity policy because everything in our school depends on electricity. So AI is going to become ubiquitous like that. Everything is going to have AI built into it. And so what we need to do is show these guidelines to be as general as possible and to allow teachers the control of the educational and learning environment that they need. So that's why instructional use is completely at the level of the teacher. And for transparency, we want staff to know that they can use these tools in the way they would use other digital resources for their professional work. So staff can use Canvas, staff can use spreadsheets, staff can use Google Docs, name any other software system. We want our staff to utilize those things to enhance their productivity and enhance our student learning. We want to give staff clear guidance that appropriate AI tools and resources will and are acceptable for them to use. But like all digital technology, staff is ultimately responsible for the accuracy and the professionalism of the outputs that they get from those digital platforms. Privacy is also extremely important for us in that we have the same level of guidance for our staff that they should never input personal sensitive or confidential data into an AI system without proper authorization. As John mentioned, there are AI systems being developed for schools. Magic AI is the industry leader right now. Schools that purchase Magic AI control that data. So that data never leaves the school environment. So that's where we can enter information and that data will be contained in our ecosphere. Something like ChatGPT is not, we don't have an institutional license for that. So that is data we wouldn't own. So we're going to need to educate our staff and our students, and John will talk about that in a minute, about some of the nuances of this, but the privacy remains paramount. Safety, like all of our digital technology, AI in our environment should be used for educational purposes only. And any misuse or malicious use of AI by a staff member like any other digital technology would result in potential disciplinary action. We highlight with staff the importance of recognizing bias and error. And we empower our staff to be looking for ways that the AI output may perpetuate stereotypes, discrimination, and inaccurate information. And of course, refrain from use if those are discovered. Lastly, with staff, we are highlighting that they can use D128 AI detection systems. So the important thing here is, you may have seen headlines where professors at universities found their own AI detection systems, ran student essays through these systems, and then the AI detection system said, oh, there's a very good chance this was AI generated. And then the university's expelled students, but it turns out that a lot of that information was not AI generated, it was student produced. And that has created tremendous problems. So we are telling our staff that we have invested in certain resources, like turnitin.com. That has an AI checker built into it. Staff can use that system. But we have to educate our staff that even the best AI detection tools, AI is very much an arms race. So if there's a detect, the way AI gets smarter is you have a detection system and then you have a programmer that builds a program to say, beat this detection system. And it is constantly one-upping itself. So to say that we could always know with 100% accuracy if something is AI-generated is almost impossible. When you look at a lot of AI-generated text and things, you as a teacher start to identify like the algorithms and the way, like if you look at gamma, you'll see that it has an algorithm and it produces slides very much in the same way. So you'll start to get skilled in detecting it. But very few digital AI systems will ever be able to give 100% confidence that something was AI-generated. Therefore, the guidance for our teachers is you can use these systems and then you can engage students in discussion about it if you suspect an unauthorized or unacknowledged use of AI for academic purposes. Where we're moving with this guidance, we wanted to share with you as a board, get your feedback. But we know our work here doesn't just end with this guidelines. We anticipate this being a major focus of continued staff development in the near future. And empowering not only teachers to have that staff development here in our building, but putting resources to teachers going to professional conferences where AI and AI's use in education is the primary focus of those staff development opportunities. We know that we have to educate our students about this. And so we will be working with our staff, not just in their classrooms, but in our transition programs for like freshman transition and link crew. We anticipate designing and delivering kind of all student education around appropriate AI use, both the power of it and some of the liabilities and restrictions of it. And then, of course, we, through our teaching and learning team, our instructional technology teams and our AI committee perhaps will even be reviewing our AI. We think we're going to need probably like us annual reviews, if not semesterly reviews because this is developing so quickly. The guidance we create today in August or September may need significant update or additions due to how rapidly this field is expanding and developing.
So that brings to a close our presentation regarding the guidelines that the committee has worked together to develop for the district and would like to open it up to you all for any questions or discussion pieces.
I'd like to thank you for the, the presentation and mostly thank the team and the district for taking a proactive approach on this. This is, it's not going away. This is, this is the reality of, of where we are. You know, some of the organizations that I participate with, there's sort of a few schools of thought. There's those that are the traditionalists that say just block it all. Don't, 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 and that's impossible. You can't possibly do that. And some are thinking, hey, embrace it. This is the, this is what's coming. You know, I, I remember the days when we tried to block Google and that's just, at, at some point in time, we have to realize that these tools are available. They're maybe become embedded in many of the things that we use every day.
And if I may add, Jim, that right now, our young people are being recruited and hired and rewarded at companies if they're able to manage and utilize this. My, you know, our, our young college graduates are being sought after by some of the top companies in the state, if not the world, for their ability to understand and utilize these technologies. So I think as a school district that is committed to preparing our students for post-secondary success and wanting to give our students every competitive edge to, to be strong candidates for positions in the future, that would be, we would be, in my opinion, we would be misguided to try to block and prohibit our students from learning to use this. The goal has been more about establishing the appropriate and proper use within our educational context.
Yeah, and, and my comment is, I think my biggest fear is how difficult this is to identify. So the vast majority of, of people, and this has been, you know, the plagiarism is not a new thing. Using other people's or other generated content of any sort is not a new thing. Fortunately, we've had some pretty good tools along the way that have grown up and Turnitin, those kinds of things. But it's becoming more and more difficult. And I think what will eventually happen is the mindset of how we assess students, how we assign assignments and, and what those are comprised of. It's no longer just go off in the corner. The example of the assignment that you gave earlier, that's an easy one to just go out and let AI do. But there's ways to, to turn those assignments around and really push the, the student to demonstrate what they know and how they learned and where they found the information. But this is, this is great information and I think it positions us as we move forward to be, you know, to constantly be monitoring this and, and, you know, keeping ahead of the, trying to keep ahead of that curve. So, thank you.
And I just want to echo Tom, what you said. I think it was very well said to make the observation that as a district, we're committed to preparing our students for the post-secondary world. And it would be misguided for us to try to push it away. And we do want to teach the responsible use of the AI tools. My question is just around academic dishonesty. And I'm curious if the misuse of AI by a student falls into the same category as plagiarism when it comes to discipline and school policy?
Yes, we are trying very closely to link the misuse of AI to the existing disciplinary policies that we have in place. So if a student used AI as a representation of their original work, that would fall under plagiarism. However, if a student used AI to generate, to generate images of somebody that were, that were false and use that to bully and to harm a person, that would fall maybe under, not plagiarism, of course, but under bullying, harassment policies. So it's how the technology would be misused would fall under our categories of discipline that then a student would be consequence for.
So the follow-up then is, do you anticipate the district needing to develop a separate category of disciplinary guidelines for AI? Or does the misuse generally fall into one of the existing categories?
So in, in our Board Policy 7190, that's actually coming today for second reading, the part that was added in by press plus in a recommendation is engaging in academic dishonesty, including cheating, intentionally plagiarizing. And then the part adding in, using a writing service under generative artificial intelligence technology in place of original work unless specifically authorized by staff. So we'll add that into our Policy 7190 under student behavior. And our prohibited, that's in our list of prohibited student conduct. So if you look at that, there's 21 different items in that policy.
And does that include the bullying that was referenced by creating an image and using it?
So then in bullying, I don't think we would need to add artificial intelligence in creating, you know, how the work was created. And somebody could make their own drawing and use that to bully somebody or AI generated to bully somebody, but that's going to fall under the bullying policy. Correct.
I think as a system, we run into problems when we try to list every possible way that a student could break, you know, our, our behavior guidelines. And so we stay away from those and create general statements similar to that relative to something like plagiarism or cheating, as well as we would with harassment, intimidation, and bullying. But those would still fall clearly under those.
And I look back to our acceptable use policy, procedures that have been in place. And I work with Temple Murphy, who's actually in the audience here, our director of IT. And we have not made substantial changes to that, partly because we haven't listed out all the different social medias or, we've been very general in that. And, and same with these guidelines, we, when we looked at it with the AI guidelines is to look at, I guess, holistically and put guidelines in place that can maybe minor changes, but as John pointed out, if we specifically stated certain things, we write them down and then tomorrow they're different.
Sure. So what I'm hearing you say is, no, we don't really need to create a new category in the, in the guidelines and policies, other than the update that press is recommending.
Correct. And then I know, you know, and I'm sure, you know, Jim and I know Temple and a few of us are connected, there's other sources from Illinois and US Department of Education. They're working on things. Their recommendation may not come down until maybe December. I, I think was the last we heard and we just couldn't wait until some of theirs. But then if their recommendations come and we have to update any of our guidelines or any of our policies, obviously we will.
And when you said that we're looking for
And when you said they were looking for guidance from the board, essentially us saying, yes, we think we should be incorporating AI. We should be embracing it, we should be appropriately using it, our students should take advantage of it, our teachers should take advantage of it. Is that what you mean by guidance?
Yes, we wanted to make sure that you as a board understood the level of dialogue we've been having as professionals around this. And the ways that we intend to outline its use. So that you would have the opportunity to ask questions, be comfortable with that. And if there was things, you know, in your expertise or backgrounds that you had for us that we would need to consider moving forward.
I think you did a great job.
I was just gonna say, I just took a paid class from inexpensive university, I could have just attended this session. So really good job there, absolutely agree. That preparing our students on the right way of using these is. There's no way but to do that and it's just like any technology, you can use it for good reasons and you can use it. For poor reasons and I think we'd be missing if we don't teach our kids how to do this, right, for for their sakes.
And I do have to say, while we have encountered some some academic dishonesty with it. More what I encounter, and I know this will warm your heart, are a lot of students who could increase their productivity. But are like, oh, no, no, I can't use this because I don't want to get in trouble with school. So and I was like telling them like, no, 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 you won't get in trouble, this is gonna, you know, you're stressed out, you you you've got five hours of homework. This piece you can do and it's going to save you some time, but it's like, no, no, Dr. K, I I do not want to get in trouble. And that's why we need these guidelines so that we can empower students to say, here is where you can use it. Appropriately, and here are areas where you would not. And our kids are seeking that guidance from us because they want to follow the rules and they want to use it appropriately. But right now, they, you know, as a as a district, we're just figuring out what what that looks like.
Yeah, I mean, in your example, it's the the. Understanding the content about biology, something you should research yourself, but putting a presentation together is not something that is. Required at this stage of life, right, so I think all that is good. I mean, I would have gone as far as saying it almost needs to be like a graduation requirement that you understand. AI completely because regardless of what you do in your postgraduate life, you're going to run into AI. That's like a given, it's like you said, it's like electricity. That's one, the other thought that I think you also brought up is. AI is no longer just a tool on its own, you see embedded AI across all the all the applications you use. Just continue to look for data privacy kind of things because some vendors or technology providers say if you want to. Utilize AI based on this vast amount of data, you need to contribute your data into the mix. And then that can get into some funny situations depending on how much of our own data we want to give them versus not, so can I keep your eye on that? And yeah, I think teachers, good luck to everybody there, you'll have to really figure out how to teach differently, how to assess differently. You could ask chat G P D to write code for you if you're in a computer science class, right, so. That really changes the game on how you look for assignments and such, but it's obviously very exciting, thank you.
I just want to say thank you and although I thank you for the presentation and thank you for being proactive for our students. As personally inept that I feel in this area, I feel a hundred percent confident knowing that you and the committee are asking these questions and preparing our students and supporting our teachers, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it warms my heart to see this topic here because this is what I engage in in my first professional life. A lot of times I'm going to board meetings, educating them on the use of AI and AI governance and AI adoption. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when they start using it more and more. The few areas that that come up which you you've covered here. But a lot of it is the 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 product that you use, right? Copyright issues are rampant, I mean, we we work in consulting and if we produce something that is used. And produced using an open source AI, it becomes their property and we no longer own any copyright to it. And hence we can't use it as as for clients, same thing will apply to students. Bias is there, but there is also incorrect data because at the end of the day, it is being trained from certain sources. And depending on what version it is used and how current is the data, I mean, as much as our world is changing rapidly. The data sets used to train the AI are important, so you want to review all your contracts with. Any of the the software providers that we use because a lot of times. When you make updates to softwares, you are. Depending on how the contract is written, you inadvertently opt in to share the data. And so the data becomes accessible to them. Now, some of them will have policies in there that say how are they going to use the data? And some of them not, and they can use your data for marketing purposes, so. Be careful of that because it's not this just the use of like it's the onus on the students or the teachers, some of it might inadvertently be if you're storing it in that system. It is accessible to them and it just gets, if these are cloud systems, then with the quarterly update. That might just run, turn some features on that makes that data accessible to them.
And just a reminder about our student online personal protection act, otherwise known as SOPA. And so this is a state law that was intended to protect the privacy and the security of our students' online data. And so this amendment went into effect July first, two thousand and twenty one, so we work with our providers. And we have a master list of our approved resources that are available online on our district website, so. They go through, again, implement additional safeguards, you know, to protect our students.
So, yeah, and I was just going to highlight that, that I'm really grateful Temple is here, Eli and Dan. Because if we find a new software that we want to use, before we can use it in the school, we have to share it with them. And our IT department researches and make sure that it is compliant with all of the SOPA laws. And if it's not, no matter how powerful it is, we can't use it until we're able to get it to the point where it would be compliant. So some of the new AI systems, as I'm sure you're aware, that are being marketed to schools are being designed to be compliant with SOPA and FERPA. Where some of the stuff that's more general for business and stuff would not be.
Yeah, I mean, and then that's where I'm talking about when students utilize some of the open source AI systems. That should go in under that that's not acceptable use per se because what are you sharing with them? That might be potentially private information, right, like if if it's about an assignment, if they put something on on there. And at the end of the day, then for the teachers, as as Sonal said, right, like this is going to be challenging. Because you're going to have to differentiate what you're going to allow students to use to just improve productivity using AI and what are you going to? Use and say that this is going to be challenging your learning and how are you going to produce evidence that you've actually learned material? Right, that is going to help you progress.
All right, are there any other comments? Thank you to the committee for everybody who did all the work, including the students, champions. And thank you for putting that into a presentation that was digestible. All right, we're going to move on to item C, the board policies, second reading, we shelved this at our last committee meeting, so. This would be a good time to dive into those, Brian, if you could give a summary.
Sure, most of the board policies, so we have actually item C and then item D, item C is our second reading and then these would go to. Next week's board meeting for approval. And most of these updates are either due to review by press. Updates language or we have to come into compliance with some of the updated public acts. Were there any questions, I know there was a lot in this group. Part of the reason why there was a a lot and then we're bringing first reading is that the timing of us finishing our actual. Update of all of our board policies, this kind of got delayed a little bit in that process, but we're still in compliance. So I'm not worried about that, but were there questions on this one?
Of course, I have several. This one's to Dan, policy two twenty. We're raising our threshold to thirty five thousand dollars, is that just, it just is now. This is.
I had this.
Two, two twenty, no, it's two twenty. Go back to it. Oh, yeah, wait, wait, wait. Maybe I wrote the wrong one.
To answer your question, the state law changed and so. Because our policy references the specific number, even though the state law bumped it up, we still have to follow our board policy as it's more restrictive. We would like to follow what the state law is.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay, going on to four sixty. This is purchases and contracts. It says, number eleven says, any new contract for district administered assessment must comply with whatever, does that mean anything for us, are we buying?
So when you're looking at district administered assessment, what it's it's telling you that you have to do prior to approving a new contract for any. District administered assessment, we hold a public vote at a regular meeting of the board. In which the terms of the proposal are presented and an opportunity for allowing public comments must be provided. So similar to other contracts that we sign at the board board would vote on.
This is just saying for anyone's that are about district administrators assessment, the board has to approve those contracts explicitly rather than. We have some other things in here that as long as it's proved in the budget, we can. Prove those contracts and get those things moving, this one now specifically spells out district wide assessments.
So examples of that would be PSAT.
Right.
SAT star that we adopted last year, those would be examples of district wide assessments we use for all students.
And this takes effect July first, two thousand and twenty four.
Okay, thank you. Item six sixty. Six sixty is curriculum content. Oh, yeah, the dangers of fentanyl.
Looking at.
It says you have to do this in grades nine through twelve, do we have a plan for that?
So looking at some of our curriculum content, anytime that curriculum content is updated. And there's a couple of updates in here that are. Teaching and learning team, so the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, the associate principals. And then the department chairs will work together to to ensure that these curriculum changes are implemented in the classroom for next year.
And that's just based on new state law.
Right, okay. We've already addressed seven one ninety, that's the, I'm just saying, good timing, we're ahead of the curve for generative artificial intelligence technology. Seven two ninety, procedures and methods for suicide prevention with the goal of early identification or referral of students. My question, it's changed to say all district staff. How are we accommodating that?
Correct, so our training that is done, most of our training is done through Public School Works and so Public School Works is an online training system. And we work yearly with Public School Works to review all of the training that's required by the state of Illinois. And when we input our staff into the training system. We're identified either sometimes as teachers or administrators or support staff. And then that funnels what training you have to do, for the most part, almost all of the training is. You know, across the board for every area, but there could be some that were just for. Teachers and administrators and not all staff, and so this, we would ensure that this covers all of our district staff.
In addition to that baseline training that all staff will receive, we also have opportunities. For staff to participate through our health and wellbeing action plan, the mental health first aid training. That teachers could volunteer to gain additional skills should they find it. School counselors, teachers, other staff members are all participating, we offered it this year and we plan to offer it again next year.
Great, thank you, that's all I have.
I had the same question about seven two ninety and the previous one, seven two eighty five, so thank you for that answer because I know it's the same for both of those. Couple others.
Any other questions on the second readings?
Yes. Board policy four ten. That one was fiscal and business management, my question was, this is a new requirement for reporting? Sorry, I lost where my question was, here it is, how does this differ from our current reporting practice? Reporting procedures and are we already doing this?
We were not doing, this is exactly what it's written, so what we've, what we've done is at the levy hearing. A law that went in place. A couple of years ago said that when you're doing your, if you're, when you're doing your levy, you have to present the most recent fund balance. And so there's a little bit of confusion about what does that means, I mean, like the end last fiscal year or like the most current month? I show you both because I'm not sure and I've I've got all, nothing to hide, so I've shared all that information, this one is a little bit different, what it's, what it's trying to show is. The average annual expenditures of the operating fund, so it's it's wanting to show that relative to the levy, that's not something that we've done relative to the levy. The what we've. Really what we've shown in terms of the the average expenditures is more when we're doing our projections, so we look back a bit, few years and we look forward several years. That's really when you would see this, this just now what it requires that. At the, at the board, at or before the board meeting, which it adopts its levy, so we would do that right around the same time. And then if the fund balance is higher than the two and a half times, that's been around for a little bit. But we're we're not at that point, so that 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 language doesn't kick in for us.
Any others? Okay, so then these will go for adoption at the general meeting and now I guess we can move on to our first reading. And I don't have any questions for that one yet. So we're now on. Item D, anyone? Okay, I see a lot of head shaking, I'm moving on to item E, which is the agreement with Rise Aquatics Club, this is an annual thing, yes?
Yeah, this is our annual agreement with Rise Aquatics Club for the use of the LHS swimming pool primarily. There is language in there, if the availability at the Vernon Hills pool, we've had a great. Relationship with Rise Aquatics over the years and so this would be our recommendation to renew the annual agreement. If anyone's wondering, at Vernon Hills, we work directly with the Vernon Hills Park District on their swim program and. We've got an agreement, a government agreement already in place. Rather than having just a year by year agreement, we have a lengthier one for use of. The pool, but also the use of their facilities for some of our programs, cross country tennis and so forth, so.
And it looks like the fee schedule goes through twenty four, twenty five, so will we be updating this contract?
Twenty four, twenty five, for next year.
Right, but what I'm saying is, so it looks like there's no changes for the approval of this one. But will we be updating it next year because the last annual usage fees or meet event fees are for twenty four, twenty five? It looks like this contract covered from twenty till through twenty five.
Oh, no, this, this is a new one for twenty four, twenty five, I only have the previous event fee, so you could see what they were, just sort of the history.
Okay.
So yeah, so twenty four, twenty five is the new ones that were.
So these have the updated fee schedules ever so slightly higher.
Yes.
Okay, any, any other major changes?
Nope.
Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to confuse you by putting the history in there.
I I appreciate getting the context, that's very helpful, I just wanted to be sure I understood.
Is there any benefit to going into a multi year agreement with them so that we don't have to keep renewing it or it's just easy to?
We can, we do, you know, the one thing is then you, obviously you lock into a cost and an increase. So I I think we have a good relationship that we both feel comfortable with.
We've tried to do it relative to inflation too, so that is a little hard to predict.
Any other questions there? All right, we're moving on to item F, educational tours. I have only one comment.
Oh, go ahead, we have six tours that my understanding is are pretty standard for our district. And a thanks to our teachers and our coaches and sponsors for making these available. And a thanks to our teachers and our coaches and sponsors for making these available to our kids. But you see the LHS Dance Team to NIU. And that's going to happen July 8th to 11th at Northern Illinois University for competition and team building. You have LHS's Girls Basketball to Purdue, similar to what we actually approved a little while back for our VHHS Girls Basketball. And that'll be June 21st to 23rd. And again, it's a traditional trip that has occurred. LHS Model UN to St. Louis, Missouri, October 18th to 20th. And again, it's a premier conference. That one is really a unique opportunity for our kids to participate in at Washington University Model UN. And then Vernon Hills Choir Retreat to JCC Rainbow Camp at Freedonia, Wisconsin, Saturday and Sunday, the 7th and 8th of September. And again, immersive experience, service learning, team building that they do there. And then our Vernon Hills Dance Team to NIU, similar trip, different dates. But again, competition, team building and performance that they will do. And then our Vernon Hills Orchestra is planning on going to Spain during spring break of next year. And I'm available to sponsor this trip and go with them. That sounds like a fantastic trip to Barcelona, Valencia, and several other places in Spain. And again, immersive experience, performance, team building. And it's following the cycle that's traditionally put in place by our music department. Questions?
I have only one. The LHS Dance Team to NIU, their itinerary says that they're going to Wheaton College. There's no mention of NIU, so there's something.
Oh.
That's not correct there.
I'll have to check that. I will, I will verify that.
Anything else? Okay, flying along here, employment of employees.
These are items that, we have a couple of retirements, resignation. And these will then go on the consent agenda for the board meeting next week. Any questions?
All right, I think I turn the next one over to Lisa. Item H, the IASB Board Resolution.
So. Thank you. When we updated our calendar, we discussed the possibility of putting forth an IASB resolution to suggest advocating for the Jewish High Holidays, the Muslim Holiday of Eid, and the Holiday of Jowali as school holidays. So if we were to have consensus that that is something we wanted to put forth for IASB consideration, you can see the timeline, the call for resolution started in April and the submission deadline is in mid-June. I'm happy to work on drafting what that wording might look like for us. I think it would be pretty straightforward. But in order to put forth that resolution, we have to agree as a board by consensus that we all agree as a board that that's something we want to put forth as an IASB resolution. So I don't want to start working on that language if we do not have consensus because we need it in order to promote the resolution. And Jim, as our IASB rep and our delegate for that assembly, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One is, yes, I would, you know, it'd be, it'd be my pleasure to bring this to the, to the group. You submit it, they go through a vetting process. Not every resolution gets through to be voted on. Some that get presented that are requested, yes or no, they make a recommendation. But I think it's a, it's a viable option. I think the more we can make it, if we wanted to move forward with this topic, the more we can make it more inclusive of calendar concerns in general, not just specific holidays, but the ability to be, have some flexibility in the way that we identify holidays. I think we might have a better chance of getting it moved through the process. I think there's some concerns that, you know, rightfully so, that we have that. It's too bad we can't identify those holidays. It's, you know, it's our calendar. And as long as we meet the requirements of so many days in a year, the student contact days, so many total days in the school year, I think we should have a little more flexibility in doing that. I know some people, some districts even take advantage of that and really don't follow the rules to the, to the T, to the letter of the law. But I think there's some, some value to doing that and to presenting something along that line. We would have to have some consensus among, amongst our board for me to be able to present that, for us to be able to submit that, so.
How do we gain that consensus? Is that an open vote? Is that just us saying right now, yes or no?
I think just right now, what I'd be looking for is that we have consensus to move forward with drafting something. I'd be very happy to, like I said, put together some wording and then work with Jim to get his input on how do we make that the most attractive for IASB to take on?
The flexibility of being able to decide not just on those identified holidays, but the flexibility of a district to decide how they want to utilize their non-attendance days, regardless of whether they fall in alignment with a religious holiday. I can, I guess my question is, even if we were to, even if we were to support this, what is the teeth involved, right? Even if the IASB does approve this, our decision was based on it not adhering to the Constitution. So regardless of whether we have support from IASB, does that change anything?
No, I think you make an excellent point. The IASB resolutions, the IASB resolutions do not govern state or federal law.
Right.
What, what it does is it tries to help promote either that flexibility for a school district to make decisions or to encourage the state to recognize those as state holidays so that we can use them. It does not change our decision and it doesn't change state law. It's just something that we had discussed at the time of making that decision would be a way that we could try to push for greater flexibility, where we felt like the interpretation of the Constitution and state law did not give us that flexibility.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. You're right, it doesn't, just by, even if the, the whole assembly votes to adopt that resolution, it really doesn't change anything except IASB is a, is a, has a big influence in Springfield, has a big influence on the way school law, school code is developed. And so if it gets through that process and it becomes one of their priorities, it's a priority for them to work with legislators, to work with the State Board of Education to be able to, you know, work those ideas into, be it school code or state law or whatever it is. And depending on how we present it, I think the idea of having more local control over how our calendars are adopted is, I think that would be something that really isn't circumvented by any law or any, you know, Constitution or anything like that. If we were to come in and say, oh, we think all schools should have X, that would be, that would not.
I think that's very limiting because that's specific to our district and our priorities, but it's.
But I think we.
And our demographics and demographics, as we know throughout the state of Illinois, very tremendously. So what's relevant demographically to our district could change over time and isn't necessarily relevant to every district in the state.
So I think there's a way to do that.
If we can come up with language that is flexible enough to get to where we want to be, but it doesn't negate, I don't want to be spinning a wheel, right? And if we made our decision based on, even though those are our days, if they even coincidentally align with a religious holiday, we are always open to a challenge of why we chose that day. And I feel like we might be spinning our wheel on that one.
I think one example to turn to, the state of New York recently did revise their school code to give schools that flexibility. So it can be considered a non-attendance day. Right now, Illinois school code does not allow that. It lists very specifically, only certain holidays can be put under the umbrella of that. So I, I think that I could share that law with both of you if you're working, at least to see language that's made its way from probably a school board to advocacy group to the legislator in New York. Not that we have to adopt it fully, but at least it's, it would show a model of something that's gone to be acceptable across a very diverse state also.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, am I seeing that we do have consensus that we would be open to crafting a resolution?
It would be open.
The time for me to craft it and have Jim take a look at revising it for its most hopefully successful version and then bringing it back to the board for potential adoption?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
I have one question slash idea. In these type of situations, are there opportunities to work with other schools? Like, oh, sorry. You can ask the second part of it if you want.
Could be more than one district brings a resolution.
Co-sponsored resolution.
I, I don't think that that's the way that the IASB resolution process works. I think it's a particular district has to put it forward. I don't think there's, I've never seen, since 2018, you know, every year before the November meeting, usually in September, October, we get a booklet that has all of the proposals for us to review so that we can.
Yeah, I will say that there have been similar proposals presented and they combine them. They'll take the effort to say, okay, these three districts did a similar thing, so let's combine those into one resolution. So I've seen that happen.
The Resolutions Committee does that?
The Resolutions Committee does that. And then, you know, the option of getting others to speak up on behalf of that resolution is also the possibility, you know, if we have some other colleagues in other districts that say, I think that's a great idea, they could also come and speak on behalf of that, that item too.
At the convention?
At the delegate assembly.
Especially when you consider feeder districts. I was wondering if you'd be identical.
Okay, you have your consensus.
Thank you.
And now we're looking for a date for the board retreat, item I.
Yes, so normally we do this in June or July, and we need to pick a date. So if everybody could look at their calendars. Were there any dates that you wanted to?
And these were always evening, like five or six o'clock until eight o'clock or something like that?
That's what we've done previously. I know some districts do during the day or a Saturday. I'm very flexible, but I think in the past, our past three retreats have been in the evening.
On a weekday in the evening. So I guess I'm wondering, does it make sense to look at a, like a, a week that we have a board meeting? Assuming that that would guide us to a, a date that we will be in town ostensibly if we're, if we're all planning on attending the June 24th board meeting, for example, does it make sense to try to do it on Tuesday or Wednesday of that week, assuming that we're planning on being in town?
I'm available.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
We prioritize the attendance at the board meeting anyway, like you just.
Then ostensibly, we should be in town. So June 24th is the, the June board meeting. The 24th, sorry, the 25th or 26th or 27th, are any of those dates a possibility?
They're all available to me.
Okay.
Same.
Okay.
Not the 27th.
Not the 27th, so we've still got the 25th and the 26th on the table. Okay, thank you. Little Ash, thoughts? Yeah, Jim?
I hate to say it, my only night off that week is the 25th.
25th.
I could do that, just before I.
Okay, so if we could, let's please pencil in June 25th. We'll target like five-ish and then bring in some, you know, a light refreshment so that people can have something to eat.
I'm just selfishly asking because that week is chaos for me. It just happens to be the, like the six hours period of time that I don't have something going on.
Okay, so we could certainly look at July.
Looking at the week of the July board meeting.
So the July board meeting.
It's towards the end.
Is. We only have one, and I don't have it on my calendar yet because it's technically.
It would be the 22nd, yeah.
22nd, so are July 23rd and July 24th easier?
Yeah, that's much easier for me.
I think this is not available.
My July is.
No.
If it's not possible, then.
Okay, what about July 16th or 17th?
I'm available both.
Yes.
I could only do the 16th.
16th?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm out.
I just don't know because we have, this is college visit season for us, so I, I don't know yet.
Okay.
I really don't know my July yet.
Okay, so then can we stick with June 25th?
I mean, the 22nd does work, yeah, we'll stick with.
Did you only want one day or two?
I think we can do one. We have not even started talking about what the topic would be, so I will definitely be crowdsourcing. We'll, we'll probably generate a couple of ideas and then ask for feedback. And if there are any other ideas, we can certainly.
I have an idea.
Check with this. Okay, great.
So we're back down to June 25th?
June 25th. Let's pencil in June 25th.
At five or six?
Let's, can we say five?
Five.
Can you make five work? Jim? Five, tough? Five 30? Yeah, let's say 530. So that'll be for the purposes of self-evaluation. So we will be putting out notice that we will be meeting. It will be an open meeting for public comment. And then we will have, you know, more of a closed session for the purpose of board self-evaluation. Thank you.
Okay, so now I guess that's back to me. I have to find out where we are. All right, future agenda items. There's a lot on there. I'm not going to read them all, so if there's anything in particular we want to add here?
My only concern is the safety and security presentation. And I wonder if, I don't know who, who's on that team, but is it possible to push it to?
We're looking to move it to the summer.
Oh, good, because it's really important and it looks like it's coming on the tail of a lot of other lengthy discussions. So if we could.
Yes.
Move it and not have it next week.
All right, well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and turn it over to Dr. Patson.
Do we want to take a five-minute break or power through?
I'm going to take.
Yeah.
It looks like a quick break.
Yeah, do a quick break.
Program and Personnel Committee meeting adjourned. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next. Currently on break. Facilities and Finance Committee meeting up next.
All set. Call to order the May 13th Facilities and Finance Committee meeting. We'll start out with invitation for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the committee?
I would.
Okay, right ahead.
Dan Herzog again. In my business career, I learned a long time ago that the maximum time you have in a meeting is about 45 to 60 minutes without a break where you lose people's attention span. You guys are remarkable with your meetings and how long you make them run. Never seen anything like it. Also, IASB has a webinar free to all Board of Education members that goes over all the new board policies. You all could have watched that. Since this is the Facilities and Fin.
How do you know we didn't?
How do we know you didn't? I don't know, because you asked a bunch of questions that were all in the information on the webinar and in the dockets. So, let's talk about a couple of things. Tonight, you guys ran over the equidistant grading and assessment. I spoke with Ms. Herman in the fall and Mr. Dr. G, talked to him personally, the open house and then in a meeting with Dr. Herman, asked them to explain the equidistant to me. They couldn't explain it very well then and to be quite honest, after listening tonight, I'm not so sure anyone in this room still even understands it. You also didn't provide any student metrics for comparisons of those grades and how it's worked so far in your pilot. And also you had a pilot, your team was 23 people, 11 of them were administrators and I'm sure handpicked, and nine teachers. Also, when you go to college or a university, not often do you get to retake tests. So how is that preparing our students for college or university if we have such a high percent that want to go to college or a university? So, that covers that. I'd like to get on to a couple of things regarding real quickly, the financing facilities part of it. We already know there's been some wasteful spending on consultants, litigation, we now have a third discrimination case that we're aware of.
We're not under suit. We have no pending litigation in this district.
I said three discrimination cases now in our district. And if you'd like, we'll be happy to post all that information to the public. You have a lot of frivolous expenses that we've seen and a very bloated staff. That all needs to be taken a look at closer. Also, Dan, I know you have, I've seen a small spreadsheet on a five-year maintenance plan. It's not very comprehensive compared to what I've seen from other districts. Also, the solar panels, I've addressed that issue before. Want to make sure on the due diligence, you guys have a provision in there for the warranty doesn't get voided when you have a new roof that you put on and then you have to go back into it and put solar panels on if in fact we get there. So, those are just a couple of things I wanted to address. I hope you all have a good night for the next two hours here.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. The LHS Cafeteria Project update, and it looks like we have some guests here to discuss this as well.
Yeah, hi. Joining me this evening, this is Zach Watherspoon from Gilbane. He's kind of our Gilbane executive that's been helping us with the project since day one. And then Mike Anderson from STR. I don't think you'll find a person on this planet that knows this building better than Mike, except for maybe Mark, who's joining us as well. So the reason I wanted to bring them here is because we are getting to the point of the bids ready to hit the street. So if you recall, back in October, back in October, the board approved us to go to bid. At that point, we thought the project was going to be about 13.6, but the estimate that we have at this point is quite a bit higher than that, roughly 16.5 million. So that's 3 million higher. And so we had a conversation about what's happened since October and so I brought Zach and Mike to talk through those things, but really kind of seems like three major categories of things. The first is the skylight that in the courtyard has grown more than what was estimated back then. The second is the learning stairs that, that is a, the design is more advanced and plus as we got into the spaces, learning some things about the existing conditions that we had to adjust that we couldn't tell from conceptual design, plumbing and electrical, things like that, you don't know until you really get in there. And the third one is about, related to our restrooms. And so maybe what I could do is turn it over to Zach and Mike if you all want to walk through kind of those major categories and give your sense to the board, like what's kind of happened over the last six months related to that.
Sure, thanks, Dan. So the three categories I'll talk through, the first one that Dan mentioned was the courtyard infill. In concept drawings, we were anticipating what would you call, what you would call a standard roof with pretty simple skylights. Your typical maybe two by four skylights in a standard roof membrane system. And since then, we've had, we've been attending the monthly design meetings with the school principal and staff as well as the student committees. It has been desired to have more natural light in the cafeteria. And one, we went through several iterations of that, whether it was just a band of windows at the top or different adding skylights throughout the cafeteria, not just at the courtyard infill, but ultimately what was decided that was best for the aesthetics of the cafeteria and the student experience was a full skylight over top of the existing courtyard. And what comes with that is some components that you don't ever really see that help hold up that skylight and the skylight itself. So you have an increase in excavation costs, an increase in concrete foundations, structural steel members to hold up the skylight and then the glazing system itself and how it ties into the existing school. So that was one cost element that we found a significant increase on in the iterations of the design process as we cut to this quarter. The sec, should I move on to the second, Dan, or take any questions on that one or move on to the second?
Why don't you do the overview?
Overview, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The second was the gathering stair, the learning stair. So as Dan mentioned, well, the stair itself at concept design, again, when you talk about a gathering stair, typically in a concept set of drawings with, with nothing really to look at, we apply a square foot cost to it based on historical data. This one's a little more complex than what we've seen in the past because it's in an existing stairwell right now. It's a lot of structural components that need to be decoupled in order to install it in its place. There's a lot of mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems in that space that need to be rerouted in order to insert the stair itself in place. And then again, through the design discussions and the school committee meetings, there were desires for certain aesthetics and looks based on, based on other stairs and whatnot that you may see in other schools. So wood paneling, planters, the stair itself, the railings, the seating, the plugins for USBs and power, things like that, that over time, as we produced the estimate for the documents resulted in an increase in cost at the gathering stair. There was another piece there, the natural light as well above the stair itself is included in the design right now. And then the third is the restroom. So when, again, when we were estimating the concept set of drawings, we were basing the restrooms on a square foot cost. Once we discovered the desire to have the bank of restrooms beside the existing servy renovated as well as the level one and two restrooms on the south end of the school, when we put together the total square foot numbers for them, the required demolition and scope associated with putting those, both of those restrooms back together, it resulted in an increase from what we had previously estimated as well. And just some of the existing conditions that were discovered through investigative work with some of our trade partners, we discovered things like a concrete lid that needs to be demolished, for example, that you wouldn't really include in a concept estimate when you're looking at a square foot desire to put a new bathroom in, into the school. The last piece is just some further discovery on the project itself that goes along with those three elements. So when we're putting the skylight in, it resulted in other, you know, outside of the skylight itself, changing the exterior of the components that the skyline meets, whether it's HVAC unit vents or reroutes that are required to get that skylight in place, those bathrooms in place, or those gathering stairs in place. So it's not just three adds, but it's some other things that kind of trickle throughout the total, the total cost of the project. We also are trying to fit a lot into one summer. So we've had really great discussions with Mark, Dan, Mike and Tom, as well as the food service group with, how are we going to do that? It's not your typical nine-week summer project. We're actually going to come in in March and try to get portions of the project done and sort of reroute the logistics as best we can, keeping the student experience obviously optimal, but trying to start the project sooner than when we would typically do a summer project. So we're gonna, we have a little bit of a, it's a longer schedule than, than you typically find in a summer project. It's actually about a six or seven month schedule as opposed to your eight or nine week project. So with that comes an increase in oversight, superintending costs, and then just ultimately the fees and general conditions of the supervisory cost for Gilbane to manage the project was a slight increase as well to the overall, overall cost of the project.
Mike, do you have anything you want to add in terms of what's kind of happened? Anything different than what Zach said?
No. I think it's accurate.
Okay. So we've got that information and then before I turn it over to y'all, there's kind of two, like, so what, now what? One is, these are still estimates, we don't know anything until people actually bid on them and so that's when we'll get real pricing. The second is, so in response to this, what we're, what Mark decided is to bid out the quad bathrooms, so that's those set of bathrooms that are further away in the other part of the building as an, as an alternate when we get the bids in so that if it, things are coming in and they're too high, that that's basically a project we would just not do at this time and look to do it another point in the future perhaps. The second part that I do need feedback from you tonight is, do we also bid the learning stairs as an alternate? Right now, they're not. They're in the main project. However, because it's a separate space, we can do it as an alternate. From what the team has said, it's pretty easy to do. It probably just takes a couple of days to get all the ducks in a row and everything because it's a separate space. It's pretty easy to build as an alternate, but they need the time to separate that out so the bid documents are all in order before it would hit the street. So that's one thing I would need feedback on, is if you want us to bid it as an alternate. If you don't, it's part of the whole package and it's really an all or nothing deal at that point. So those are the two, kind of so what now whats in terms of what we're talking about. So with that.
So my initial comment is, okay, so we're three some million dollars over what had anticipated. And unless we can magically find 3 million dollars somewhere, we have to figure out a way to do this, as much of this project as we can within the scope of the funding that we have available. So doing the bathrooms separate might help. We might get some help with bids coming in lower, which sometimes they do. But would that bathroom be enough to offset if the bids come in as we now anticipate 3 million over? If the bids come in as we now anticipate, three million over, is that enough to give us enough cushion to say, okay, we can move forward? Those bathrooms are three million dollars. I kind of doubt they're three million dollars worth of bathrooms. So my, I guess it, you know, what, what puzzle pieces can we work on here? Do we just do the bathrooms as an alternate? Do we do the learning stair as an alternate so that we know, we at least get the core cafeteria work and those bathrooms done if the bids come in as high as we anticipate? What are the options there?
I don't see any disadvantage to bidding the stairs as an alternate.
Do you want to talk about the bathrooms? They're not going to be three million.
It's, it's not enough to take just the bathrooms up. It's a chunk though. And with the stair combined, it's a, it's a pretty good sized chunk to get closer to the number. And I liked your comment on the bids. We have a pretty healthy market of trade contractors right now. The bidding community is busy, but not as busy as it's been in the years past. So we're getting healthy numbers. We're getting three or four bids on every package. By package, I mean a plumbing package, an electrical package, a drywall package. So we may see some recoveries there as well. The bathroom and the stair combined as alternates will get, will still not get you there in the two of them combined in total, but it, it will be the majority of that three or so million dollars, just won't get you all the way there. We can get an exact number on that, but the, the answer is no, they will not get you the full recovery. But with that and recognition of possible savings on bids and then further discovery on potential other items you could get there, but not in full.
Is it typical to be twenty-five percent off from concept to, to now this?
It is when what ends up getting designed is different than what the concept was at the beginning.
We allowed, we allowed significant input from students and staff to go from concept to where we are now. They've been meeting once a month, as you said, and visiting other places and seeing some amazing spaces. And so I do think the idea of integrating student voice and staff voice into the project has been one component in addition to other, the other things that were listed there.
Then that leads to an additional question. Are there things that either were added or that would be considered a value engineering kind of thing that could be included as an alternate without the two separate projects or making it three separate projects, but some things that were requested that are nice to have, but maybe, you know, I'd rather have the project done than have to push a project off another year because we just can't beat our, our budget.
It sounds like the skylights fall into that category to me. And I'm really interested to hear how we could potentially re-envision what that looks like. It just sounds like there's a lot of pre-construction, so to speak, work that goes into supporting this, what sounds like an absolutely stunning skylight situation. But I, I mean, I, I think of this cafeteria project as it's going to be just such an unbelievable improvement compared to what we have. And I think the kids regardless, and the teachers will be so, and I, I'm not diminishing that it, it's painful to take out some of the nicer aspects of this project, but I think it will just be such a source of joy in the building and for the community. I don't, I don't see redesigning some aspects of it coming at this, this big detriment. I think redesigning some things, bidding some things back out falls definitely within the responsibility of the board to be good stewards of our community funds. And so I, I would love to hear more about how you envision kind of still bringing in that lightness and brightness into the space, but maybe doing that at a rate that's a little more, you know, digestible for us.
Yeah, I'll let y'all answer, but my sense is, is the change in the skylight is not like a tweak or anything, it would be a, it would be a pretty robust redesign of that whole area. I think so, I'm gonna, but I'm gonna let y'all answer that.
Yeah, the, the skylight is kind of integral to, to, to design. The structure is designed for that, the mechanical is designed for that and stuff. So while it could be kind of closer to that original budget number in that it would just be kind of barrejoist with, with individual skylights above it. In order to really recoup the, the cost, the structure would need to be redesigned, mechanical. So it would be, it, it wouldn't be an easy alternate to do. So that would take, but it can be done. It would take some additional time to, to, you know, to kind of redesign that or at least create a standalone alternate for it.
I, I would, I'm sorry, please continue. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought you were finished.
Oh, no, the, the bathrooms and the learning stair are, are far easier because they're literally different parts of the building. So, so that type of alternate is, is a simple one, or at least in terms of, of schedule, it's fast. So the, the skylight can be done, it, that would just take some, some additional time.
And that would be time on the part of STR?
Oh, well, it would have an effect on when it goes out to bid, therefore the construction schedule.
Sure. I, I would also be interested in seeing an option without the skylight. I understand what an integral part of the design that is, but it is also a nice to have, not a need to have. And in order to fit into the originally anticipated budget, which I think is important to me and to some other board members, I, I think looking at that as a potential option is, is practical.
I mean, I, I remember our initial conversations about the learning stairs not really being a nice to have, that this was a part of the entire concept of going down a lunch period and having access. So I don't, I don't see the learning stair. And, and I'm, I guess, you know, coming from a smaller project, you have a budget and that's what you, what can I get from my budget? So I guess I'm questioning, why are we so far out of our budget? Why are we so far away from our budget based on our concept, knowing what it was that were our, our must haves? And I do think our learning stairs was a part of our must haves in order to have this whole project look right.
Sure. I, I just think that adding it as an option just lets us see what that cost is. It's not saying that we are.
I mean, we already stretched to get to the thirteen million to, so how, I guess I'm, I mean, when I saw these numbers, I'm dumbfounded that we are this far off again when it was orig, when we were originally thinking, you know, somewhere in the eights.
Well, and as Dan said, until we actually get bids, we won't really know. I think these are good estimates that were being provided. But I think, you know, making an alternate out of as many things as we can so that we can sort of put a puzzle together of what we are willing to approve is probably a good idea at this point because we have a, a significant difference between what the estimate was and now what we anticipate bids coming in at.
I, I would agree with that. I think I would do an alternate for the bathrooms, alternate for the learning stairs. And I'd like to understand what, what an affordable glass, I mean, ceiling light looks like. Sorry, I'm not getting the right words. Skylight looks like that will fit because, you know, on a lighter note, I've watched enough home building shows on HDTV that you know, once you get in there, you're going to find all kinds of things that, you know, are going to potentially add to the cost. So I think we need to give ourselves some buffer there.
But I think we have to remain true to what was our intention with all of this. We've already, you know, we already stretched ourselves because we said, as long as we're going into a project, let's stretch ourselves and get these. So what, I guess, I would go back to the committee that's talking and saying, what are our must haves? I thought I understood what our must haves were, and maybe I don't. And that's something that your design committee, knowing that these are our parameters, being a little more realistic, I agree, anything's going to be better than what we have. But be a little bit more realistic about how can we maximize, get all of our desired result as far as student experience in and out for lunch. But I, I under, you know, I'm pretty tied to the whole learning stairs after being explained how it would help throughout the whole day. That is a serious value added in this project. So I would hate to see that as something that we would put aside for the cafeteria.
You know, and, and I would too, I would agree with that. I think what it does is it gives us the option of, if we can't get it done because we bid it all at once, then at least that gives us, if we bid it as an alternate, we can say, okay, we'll do that next year, or we'll do that on another schedule in order to meet our, our dollar requirements for this project. The, the question I have is the, the full blown skylight versus what was originally thought, conceptually? You have any idea what dollar difference that would provide? Is it worth, you know, if it's going to save us a hundred grand, but it's going to cost us double that to go back and redesign and post it as an alternate? It's.
It's more than a hundred grand for, to go from the skylight back to the traditional roofing barrejoist system with, with traditional skylights in it. It's, it's several hundred thousand dollars. The part I'd need to discover more with, help with, from Mike is the design consultants that are supporting STR with the design, what the hours and fees are for them to go back and change things mechanically, electrically, plumbing, moisture protection, roofing, all the different components go from the current system in the design development set to a different system. It'll still be less than the cost change to the construction components of it. But it would need to be balanced with the deduct in the construction cost to determine if it's worth your while to implement that change ultimately.
And how do we know what that number would be? We don't until you actually get into it, right?
Yeah, the design team would need to put together a, an order of magnitude on what the cost would be for them to go back to the drawing board and take it back to a particular design. And then we, as the construction manager, would need to reprice that and get the dollar figure. The other component I just want to mention is, it's, is the time of the schedule that Mike mentioned earlier. We don't want to miss the, the dead, the boat on getting materials ordered and, and getting the project done. So we'll work diligently with, with everyone as needed to make sure that that, that that happens. The kitchen equipment, the HVAC units, some of those things take thirty to sixty weeks to get. So we just need to make sure we keep that in mind as we, as we move forward. And lock in trade contractors too, that's important for summer projects because all the schools do work in the summer. We want to make sure in twenty twenty-five summer that we, or twenty twenty-four summer that we're, we're getting the, the trades, you know, locked into the project.
Can you remind us that the plan, the timeframe, what happens this summer? What happens during the year? What happens?
Yeah.
Summer?
Yeah, sure. The, sure. This summer is the bathrooms next to the servary. Those are getting fully renovated. And then in December, January of the next school year, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, we're going to put in the new kitchen in the existing faculty lounge and get to the point where the servary is able to be abated because there's asbestos in there over spring break, March of twenty twenty-five. So that in April, April first or so of twenty twenty-five, we can start the remaining portion of construction in the servary. And then when the students let out, say, you know, June first of twenty twenty-five, we block everything else off and do the courtyard and cafeteria work and the gathering stair and the other set of bathrooms, depending on what gets all included in the project. So about twenty or so percent of it is being done this summer and eighty percent of it next summer, next spring slash summer.
Thank you.
I have kind of two questions. One, first one is for Dan. So let's say we go ahead with what we have right now. Where do we find the three million?
Well, if you recall, the number that we had to work with before you were at a threshold that I thought was too low was a little over fifteen million. And so that's that amount of money. And then if you recall from my mid-year financial review, our surplus for this fiscal year was running closer to three million due to really interest income being exceptionally higher than we would have anticipated because of interest rates being much higher for much longer than I guessed. And then the second is expenditures lower. We had a lot less outplaced students based on what we thought. A lot of them integrated back into the school system, which was great. But that just means the money that we budgeted for them to be outplaced, we're not spending. So those are the big, bigger rocks in terms of what happened in terms of the finances. So where, if you did go through this, where would you get the money? My sense is you had about fifteen million or so, a little more than fifteen million that you could have spent. And then you probably will have an additional three million-ish, you know, the fiscal year starts to settle up, but this is round numbers here from the fund balance. So all else being equal, you might have enough cash by the end of the fiscal year to be able to account for all of those things. What it just does, it reduces your ability to do more projects in the future, which is not a new thing that I've been saying. So those are, that's how I would answer.
Okay.
My quick question is, what does the administration recommend, Dan Denise? Do you have a recommendation?
I mean, my, it's a good question. I'm, I'm thinking, my recommendation for sure is to do the, do the bathrooms as, as an alternate, the learning stairs as an alternate. It really depends on your view of whether it's integral to this or not. So beyond that, I don't have a recommendation more than that.
It sounds like the, some of the bells and whistles is what's caused this to go up. So I'm just kind of thinking about if we back away from those bells and whistles and go like down to the basics, and does it fit in our budget? And then it gives us a little bit of flexibility. If stuff comes up that we need to pay for, we've got, got money rather than stretching ourselves all the way to the end. So is there a way for you to say, these are the bells and whistles? If we take these out, we can fit. So what can you do architecturally to fit in the budget we have and meet those objectives of? And the servers and stairs and the, we, we need light, but it doesn't have to be like the million dollar light. Could be something more affordable.
Can I add on to that? The bells and whistles without it causing a significant increase in going back and redesigning? Is there a way to look through this list without expending more money in design to figure out where can we cut this? What can we cut down a little bit to get it closer to what our initial budget was?
Yeah, I mean, maybe I'll be the one to ask the dumb question. Didn't we have the original estimate without the bells and whistles? So why does it cost us more money to go back to that original estimate, which already didn't have the bells and whistles?
The original, the original number you're talking about is conceptual design. That's very, a very basic and rudimentary design. It, it just, it's, it's, it's basic outlines of the project. The, the design phases that they're in now are very, very, very specific. And actually, their construction documents are ready to go out to bid is the phase that they're in now. So that is way more specific, way more particular information. And there's things that you know, when you, when you get into those phases that you wouldn't know in conceptual design. For example, conceptual design was doing learning stairs, but some of the existing conditions, like you wouldn't know until you really got in there and realizing, oh, there's electrical work to happen because those are stairs that have things in them. There's plumbing work that has to happen. Some of that stuff you wouldn't get, you wouldn't necessarily know in conceptual design. So I just want to make sure I'm answering the, the questions that were asked. I think, so now your question of are there things architecturally that you can split out with that aren't terribly that hard? I'm just like trying to.
I'm, I'm trying to see, you know, if we, we're trying to come up with, here are some pieces so we can make a decision on what fits, but I'm kind of asking it another way. And that is, you know what our top line budget is? You know what our objectives are? We, I think, know what is, what are features we must have. So within those constraints, what is the best design you can give us? And yes, it might not have the fanciest skylight, but it gets, gets us enough light. You know, I'm kind of trying to think about, I'm kind of asking you guys the question, without spending, you know, another half a million dollars on, on redesign. But is there, I know it's not like building a Lego house, but you know, um, just trying to get a sense of what can you do without really spending a lot of money and time is still help us get closer to our budget?
Is, is the question that we're asking, how much will it cost to present us with a value engineered design? That, that's really, I think, the question we need answered. How, how much will it cost to present us with a plan that doesn't include the full dome skylight or whatever that, you know, most extensive skylight option is? Because I think that will be helpful in letting us know if it, you know, we're trying to, to, to determine how to most responsibly afford this project. And it seems logical that doing a redesign at this point is more fiscally responsible than trying to figure that out later in the process. And again, I, I don't think that there's any downside to bidding out the bathrooms and the learning stairs as alternates so that we can decide based on how the actual bids come in, what we can afford to include. It's, it's not saying that we know best what's a must have or a, not must have, it's just we need to see the actual bid costs before we approve anything.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I'm kind of stuck on the ceiling, uh, the skylight because it's evident, at least to me, that we cannot afford what we've got designed so far. Should we at this point say we need to go like to the next affordable tier or, or not? And what's that cost? Are we going to spend half a million dollars trying to figure that out versus half a million dollars to just build it? That's the differential that I don't know.
I think the other piece that we have to be concerned with those timing. Because if we, you know, if we're going to gain maybe a couple hundred grand on the scope of things, but we delay the project that also then costs us time and possibly scheduling issues and things like that. You know, I, I agree. I think it, there's no harm in bidding out the, the stairs separate, bidding out those bathrooms separate. I guess my question would be, and, and I think this is based on my assumption, we, we talk about there's some bells and whistles. The bells and whistles didn't push all that.
Right.
Over. It, it contributed a little bit, but I think to answer the question, it's an old building and we didn't, you know, until you dig into it, you don't know exactly what you, you have to work with and what you need to compensate for. But, um, the only other question I would have is, are there some things that, whether it be finishes or, or some things that could be easily adjusted to gain some of that increase back? I, I, you know, if there is, there is. If there isn't, I'm, I'm willing to go forward with what's designed with the alternatives and see where the bids come in. Worst case scenario, it comes in double, we reject the bids and we start from scratch. But I don't think that's what's going to happen.
Well, I understood that the, with the more advanced skylights, there is a, there's a much more construction work that goes with it. And that's what adds to the cost of the entire thing. It's not.
That was one of the things.
Yeah.
The stairs were a big read, like that's going to gobble up a lot of the budget too because there's a lot of engineering that has to go into creating the new stairs. Is that correct? It was more than we thought.
So, um, there's no additional cost to you for all the, the extra engineering, but the construction associated with that engineering is the, is where the cost for the district is. So some things are just a very, an old building that can be very complicated. Certain assumptions were made by the estimator, um, that, um, turned out to not be, it wasn't as simple as the, you know, when we started getting into the details, they made certain assumptions, for instance, electrical system. We had to do certain upgrades. There were plumbing in the way, there's some fire alarm thing. So there's lots of little components, um, that, uh, that weren't realized in that early conceptual, um, estimates. That when you get into the real detail of it, you know, the soil conditions and the amount of excavation that go on, the foundations and different things like that for the, for that skylight kind of came into play. So, um, um, it's hard to take it down to some simple things. But to, um, to try to answer the, the question about, um, um, the time and cost to change, the more we leave things, you know, the systems in place, um, um, the less, less change is required from the engineering point of view. And then essentially the easiest is, and essentially it's a nominal, it's a nominal thing. The more we totally kind of throw out what's there and, and kind of redesign at the middle, it would be both time and, 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 and money. But, um, uh, the thing I'm most concerned about is that, um, we've spent, um, months developing these plans with the teams and with the, um, the committee. And, um, um, I'm, I'm reluctant to, or I'm, I'm not sure how to weigh their input versus, reductions. So I'm, I'm not sure how to, um, um, give a value or understand what's important if we were to reduce things. The skylight was incredibly important to, to the committee. We had literally dozens of different options where we just had a courtyard and kind of opening. We had, yeah, um, clear story windows. We had skylights of kind of every different kind of component. And, um, so there's a reason it looks the way it does currently. And I'm, um, and if we were to change, I, I don't know how much additional input would be required from the, from the committee to kind of weigh, um, is this enough or is this, um, you know, do we want, really want to, um, or some essentially weigh, weigh what's important to, to, to that committee?
Yeah. And I don't want to put you in a difficult position. I know you've been in this seat longer than you probably want to discuss in public right now. But we're willing to make the hard call. We, we're, it's our job, it's our responsibility to either approve or not approve this project. So I understand it puts you in a difficult position to say what's, uh, to speak on behalf of the, the committee that has put in so much work and so much time, uh, with their recommendation. But at the end of the day, we have to spend the money. And I, I think what I'm really looking for is an answer to the question of how long would it take you to come back to us and tell us how much it would cost to come up with a practical redesign of that skylight so that it would be something that we could feel comfortable spending money on? I'm not asking for, give me a guess of what that dollar is. Set my, set our expectation as to what is practical for, how long it would take to come back with a more practical skylight option that we would feel good about approving.
Ironically, the, uh, the budget aspect, the cost, you know, weighing, weighing some cost options is a relatively quick exercise because we would work with Gilbane, say, what if we did this? And, um, so then they would be able to, um, give that conceptual like cost savings. Um, actually, we did a lot of that early on, um, in, but in the other direction where we thought, well, if we enhance this, how much more would that be? That kind of thing. So, um, so we would be able to, um, I think relatively quickly create some cost models. And, um, and maybe work with the administration to, to determine what that recommendation, you, depending on this, if we did this, we could save this much money. If we did this, we could save that much money. And maybe create a, um, a, a scenario or two of, 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 of cost modeling. Would that be reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like it would be very helpful.
For that.
That sounds like it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
So if that's, if we go there and do a little value engineering, timeframe wise, board meeting, um, is in two weeks?
One week.
One week.
June 10th is the next.
And then June 10th will be, there's a new meeting June 10th. So we have to be aware of our timeframe to get out this on the street. We are planning on putting it out, uh, I think the 23rd, 23rd. So, um, we still have some time.
Yeah.
Because we are building trades to start in November. It's going to make it tough on some of the equipment that you have to order, like HVAC equipment on top of the roof. So we want to make that turnaround, whatever decisions are going to be, um, make sure we're in line with, you know, our engineering for that equipment, so that equipment can get ordered.
So the intent was to have it on the street by the 23rd of this month.
To bid it.
Bring the bids, the recommendations for the, um, uh, to the June board meeting for approval.
No, we wouldn't probably make the 10th if we bid it on the 23rd anyway. So we'd probably go to, uh, 23rd. The bids would, the bids would come back in on the 14th of June. We'll usually allow three weeks so that, so that we'd come to the next one with recommendations for trades.
Yeah, because the 10th is just a committee meeting.
Right. We could add a special meeting if we needed to vote, but.
There is a special meeting at night anyway.
The cost modeling that you're discussing can be available on the 10th, if that's helpful.
That would be helpful.
But, um, we, what I'm hearing is cost modeling would be great for the skylight, but we could do an alternate bid for the stairs and the bathroom that we can go ahead, right?
I don't think there seems to be any opposition to that.
Yeah.
The alternates for the stairs and the bathrooms is, we could do that right now. We cloud the drawings and in our bid, just instructions to bidders, we identify those as alternates.
Okay.
The design on those, to answer your question earlier, there's, there's not much to scale down on the design of a bathroom or even the gathering stair as well, isn't loaded with these extreme design features. So the, uh, the, the cost modeling is probably where you'll see the savings through the skylight scenarios. And then keeping those as alternates, which we'd have below the line of the base scope to do the cafeteria with the options of the different skylights.
But just to be clear, all the bids have to go at once. So they can't bid the two alternates without the thing that it's an alternate too.
Right. The, yeah, yeah. This isn't a scenario where you can have four or five different bid packages going at one or at four or five different times. It has to go out together.
I think one other thing we have to put on the table is, is this feasible within the timeline constraints that we've set, knowing we now have this pricing hurdle? I think our intention was to try and have construction done by summer, August of twenty twenty-five. I'd rather do this really well and not have the board feel pressured to make a decision too quickly. And just look at that as one of the other variables that could change and have it be the following summer. That would be, I mean, it would delay some other, you know, possible things that we would want in terms of students experiencing an improved cafeteria and other flexibilities with the schedule. But again, I think that's just one consideration I'd want the board to think about is extending the runway on this project.
I would add to that, that extending it a year adds escalation costs that may wipe out whatever savings you have by redesign.
It's true, but I think it's important to discuss that that is, it is still an option as opposed to rushing for something that's a, a, you know, thirteen to fifteen million dollar commitment. I, I would not want to be in a position to be overly hasty.
Right. I'm, I'm just pointing out that it may in fact cost us more to do less.
I mean, we're already looking at a Vernon Hills cafeteria that's not more than ten years old, that went from eight million. And this is a similar scope. If I remember that being a part of our presentation, this is a similar scope and it's almost doubled already.
Well, it, it's actually not a similar scope. The back of kitchen at Vernon Hills was not touched at all. So the cooking part and the freezers and all that, um, the staff washroom in the, in the back area, the only thing that was, was done at Vernon Hills was the exhaust hood in the back of the kitchen was upgraded. Otherwise there was no work, which is a considerable amount of money.
I think, I think your point was the, you see the escalation.
Yeah.
In waiting. Yeah, the opportunity cost.
For sure. No, that's definitely a, a consideration as well.
So. Dan, when you made your recommendation a minute ago, you said you would, uh, you would recommend that we split it into three different things. The cafeteria, the stairs and the bathrooms. We would split those two things off, but you didn't say you would recommend that we would look for a redesign.
I, I don't feel that I could recommend to you either way. It depends on what you want to do. Sometimes it's a little, like I, I can't determine your priorities for you. So I can, the best I can tell, help you with is the implications of your priorities and decisions. Even walking in here, I, I can't predict whether your reaction is going to be stick to the thirteen and a half million or if the reaction is, well, that's what we want. So it's going to just cost more. I, I, I don't know how to, I, I can't predict how, what your reaction is going to be. I mean, I tried to do that in a lot of ways, but for this I can't. It's a little difficult to know when something like that will matter. And sometimes it may, sometimes it may not. And so it's hard to predict whether that will be. So in terms of redesigning the skylight, like there's multiple ways I can see that you reasonably come to a conclusion and it could be a redesign, it could be go with what you have. So I, 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 I think they're all reasonable possibilities. So I, this, me not having a recommendation isn't meaning I'm saying I'm not recommending it. That's different, other than saying, I, I don't have a recommendation to say this is the path you should take because I don't think there is a clear, to me, walking in that, I don't think there was a clear, this is the right thing that you need to do. I, I don't have that in me.
Okay. And then, uh, you said that there was, uh, additional money that was coming in, uh, from two different sources that were about three million dollars.
Two different sources that are about a million and a quarter. So our budget already had a surplus built in, smaller one, million and a quarter more on interest income, that's more revenue, and then a million and a quarter less on expenditures, which are a variety of different things. Most of that is going to be, or the biggest portion of that is going to be the tuition for outplace students that came in much less than we had thought.
So between that unexpected money and our original budget, how close are we to getting to the, the final budget that's being presented now?
You, you might be there.
So it would be possible to move forward theoretically, go ahead and bid these out the way they are and see how the bids come back and see if we are in a position to actually go forward. And that way we save our timeline. And if we're not in a position to go forward, then we can wait that year that was just discussed.
But we, we did establish, I believe, unless I misunderstood, that we can give a, a bit of time to see if there's, how much a redesign might get us and still meet the timelines of what we're looking for. That way we could save ourselves the possibility of being in a position in June to say, no, we can't afford this.
Is that where we are?
Dante, answer your question, the answer is yes. So could you just move forward? You might have enough money to do it. The answer is yes. However, there's implications. The implication is you might have other projects that if I want to do, those would have to wait. And based on what I'm hearing tonight, it sounds like there's a good opportunity to look at an alternative for the skylights that might help get you closer as an, as an alternate. Because if you bid it as it is, either you're doing the skylight or you're not doing anything. Sorry, because it's all, it's all packaged together right now. I think it makes sense that, given that it's only going to be a few weeks, that you can get that information and not have.
And still make the timeline.
And make the timeline is the idea.
The 13.6 million, if you cut the stairs out and, and the bathrooms, you know, that's 2.5 million. So it puts you about 14 million, or say a half million dollar over the 13.6 with the skylight as it is.
Yeah, and Gilbane said there's a 20% discount if we use, what was the code you said?
How much is that sky? I mean, out of the 91 pages, what is the cost of just that portion of the skylight?
So it's, there, there's not a summary of just that portion. It's several different trades, so it's a lot of site work. That, that's a lot of the cost that you see, site work and foundations and structures. It's split into multiple different trades. So I don't know if you have anything fancy here.
It's one to 1.3 million dollars or so. Like Dan said, when we estimate the foundation, the concrete work, it's concrete there and concrete in a few other places. So we'd have to break that out for just that portion of scope. Same thing with steel. We have some other parts of the project that have some miscellaneous metals and steel, so we'd have to pull that out. But it's, it's around that, that figure.
But it's not one point.
The actual cost of the skylight is not.
Additional, it's going to be, it's going to cost us something.
Yeah, like if one option will be 400,000, one will be 600,000, one will be 800,000. This one's 1. something million. So it, it doesn't go to zero.
Right.
Whereas the gathering stair does go to zero if you don't do it. There's nothing else that connects down to the gathering stair and the, the other bank of bathrooms goes to zero if you don't do it.
Yeah, but if you, let's say, came down to $800,000, then that lets us do some other bathrooms in the future, right? Because that's kind of the math.
It's the opportunity cost.
Yeah.
So I have two questions. One is, there's an estimate here, estimate tracking of four courtyard rental, including student and faculty dining rental. That includes.
Can you tell me what page you're on?
I am on page 18.
Thank you.
So that includes the skylight. If it says courtyard.
Yes.
So the total for all of that, including the faculty dining and everything, is 1.8 million.
Correct.
Okay. My other question is, just to be clear, you assured us you could come back on the 10th with sort of a menu of what could be some cost savings related to this. So 400, 500, it's not going to be 1.8 because we're going to do this work. So it could be 400, 500,000. My question is, what then is the timeline? If we say, yeah, we like that, but we don't want the big skylight, we want it redesigned. What does that add to the timeframe in terms of redesigning and recreating the 90% or 100% CD drawings for this particular section?
It, it varies greatly depending on which option it is. If, if we change everything from the ceiling plane up, that would be the most drastic. We change the structure, we change the mechanical, change the lighting, change the ceiling, change the mechanic, or sprinklers, you know, in that area. On the other hand, if we omitted the skylight, and so we left the whole structural hole where the skylight is and put bar joists in with individual, like four by four skylights or something like that. There, most of the systems would remain as is and are just tweaks. So that would be the fastest and the easiest, the least expensive, just because it would be, or the least expensive to change, because it would just be done quickly. You know, it'd be nominal kind of cost. But you wouldn't, you may not achieve the savings that you want from that. And that's, that's kind of where we're thinking about, we can conceptualize some of these cost models. So those two things alone would give you the biggest range in, in the cost differences. I'm not sure, I'm sure there's things in between. I can't, I can't quite think of what those might be right now.
But would either of those push the timeline to where it would impact the ability to do the bulk of the construction in 25?
The, the one where we leave the structural hole, that one wouldn't really change the timeline very much. In fact, we could, it wouldn't change the timeline. The redesign of, of the entire roof structure, that would take some weeks, you know. So it just involves, you know, all the engineering for, for that. So it would involve some time and, and also some review, weighing, weighing up with the administration, having a couple of meetings.
I just want us to be clear on what potential impact it might be so that we're going into this with our eyes open, so that we're not, we'd like to do this, and then we get to that point, we say, oh yeah, that's great, we can move forward with this, we're going to save you $500,000. But guess what? It puts it off another year. So we don't want to be in that spot where we're delaying the entire project, if at all possible. So whatever we can do to avoid that.
Yeah, so on the 10th, we can come with some of that information as well related to schedule.
Okay.
I think to add to that, thank you for that. It might also help to see this, you might save half a million dollars in the eventual construction, but it's going to cost you half a million dollars to redesign it. I mean, then it's a wash, so I'm just coming up with.
Be the case, but.
But, you know, I think it'll be helpful to see what's the cost and the time of the redesign relative to the cost of the actual final product.
So yeah, so the information that they'll have is cost options that were, that will affect the total project cost. The cost of the design is really more about time.
Yeah.
And time in terms of the schedule of the project. So that's more, also information that we'll be able to share on June 10th as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so I think we're in a spot where we're going to look for some information on the 10th related to the skylight, the whole courtyard structure. But we're also in consensus, and correct me if anyone, if I'm wrong, that when we bid, we can bid the stairs and the bathrooms separate. Doesn't mean we won't do them, it just means that we get more granular pricing on those two options. Anything I'm missing?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, folks. I appreciate it. All right, where are we on the agenda? Tentative budget, Dan, you're up again.
Our tentative budget is, there's a memo there with a link to all the reports for tentative budget. It was posted Friday in the paper, ready for the hearing on June 10th. So I don't really have anything further to add than what the memo that's in there, so if you have any questions.
Anybody have questions, comments?
Nope.
I appreciate all the granular detail that was in all the links that you provided in the memo. Thank you.
A lot of different ways to look at it and slice and dice the numbers.
Okay, moving on, indemnification agreement.
It's an annual agreement with the county. Basically that they allow private agreements with developers between us. They will agree to require proof of payment before they issue their permits. And if we have such an agreement, which we don't have any, but if we did have such, they would deny those permits until they had proof. But if they got sued because they denied it, they want us to defend that. So it's a standard thing we've been doing for many, many years. We've never had it, but it's an annual agreement.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Drivers Ed Fee Waiver.
So this is the context of the information that we talked about when we had our fee discussion back in the winter. And so if we got a memo here that's explaining some of the context behind it, as well as kind of a narrative that we, that I drafted, that would go along with the application. So what we would have is at the May 20th meeting, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the hearing that's required by law, that all that, all the notices have already been done. We'll have that hearing and then the board has to vote to approve the waiver application, right?
Yes.
And then, okay, so after the hearing, you know, public comment on that, then you, then the board can have consideration on that. And then it would go through the legal process, through the general assembly and things like that.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, moving on, interest transfer resolution.
Before. Yep, we do an annual transfer of, of funds that are generated usually in your debt service fund, but we don't have any debt service, so there's no money in there or a working cash fund. And so there's interest generated there. And if you, you're allowed to transfer it out into a fund of most need. If you don't, it becomes part of the principal balance and it's just harder to get the money out later. You can, but it's just a little bit harder. So the easiest way to get that money out is through this annual transfer that we do. And so it's moving money into the fund. Pretty standard, except a lot more interest income this year.
Yep. Any questions, comments? Okay, another routine thing, treasurer's bond, speaking of another routine thing.
Routine thing, but hey, I got you some money to help pay for your project. Normally, we are, we have to bond at 25, this is, the normal, the normal way that it's worked for a long time is you have to have a 25% bond of the highest cash value you would have at any point of the year. So I try to predict, usually it's October, when we have our highest cash, I predict when that will be. And then I have to get a bond for 25% of that amount. And then that costs, it's been $18,000. You, there's not a whole lot of risk if you're overbonded, you're just paying more than you need to. If you're underbanded, you can get your hands slapped by the ROE, though it has to certify this. A law was passed last summer that allowed the, the bonding to go to 10%. And it's no longer your highest cash value, which is something you have to predict. It's the value of your most recent fiscal year. So I know to the penny what our cash was of the most recent fiscal year, which was fiscal year '23, because this year is not done yet. And you have to have the bond in place before the new fiscal year, so it's always going to be the last year's fiscal number. So we have that information, so basically we can bond down from 18,000, we can bond and the cost of that bond will decrease from 18,000 to 6,000. And 6,000 is probably going to be the number we'll be at for the foreseeable future.
Well, now we can get the.
Yeah, yeah.
You can get one of the panels.
All of the things.
One light.
Okay, any questions, comments? Nope. Okay, solar update.
Trying to be efficient with time. The solar update is, there's numbers here, the, the best thing to do long-term is cash. But the PPA is extremely attractive, especially if you happen to note in the tentative budget that electricity is going up 40%. That is massive. That is just going to make all those numbers go up by 40%. So, excuse me, based on everything I've talked, we've talked through, I think going out for a long-term PPA that you could lock in a price, you could maybe lock in a price at four cents for 25 years, kilowatt hour, is absolutely worth our time right now. So what I would recommend at this point is I'd go out to bid for that. For companies to design a system, and basically we're purchasing at a price. And based on the counsel from our attorney, it's something we would bid. There's an exception of the law to buying utilities. Because really, if you think about a PPA, is you're actually, you're buying energy from a company. It just, what happens on the backend is they're putting the solar panels in, they're getting the energy and they're charging you. So you're just actually buying energy. So there's an argument that you could just use that exception. However, the intention of that exception was when there's only one utility company and who else are you going to buy from? So that, that's the intention. There are multiple people that could provide this, and so you really owe it to go through that process. So I'd like to just go through that process and see what we get on the other side. So that's what I would recommend moving forward with, with covering the areas that we've seen and the stuff we've talked about previously.
What do you need from us?
I need your consensus to move forward with bidding this out. There won't be any costs associated with bidding it out.
Nothing to lose on this. Anyone have any concerns?
Yeah, so you have consensus, can you give us a sense of a timeline?
My sense is probably we would have this and we would have the information back in July. June is going to be too soon for something like this.
Just set the expectation. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we got some future agenda items here. We actually sort of clients had them before, but there's just the, the three items for the FNF, which are pretty standard items. Anyone else have any thoughts on FNF agenda items? No? Okay, I will, if there's nothing else, I'll call the facilities and finance adjourned.
Okay, thank you. Next up tonight is our special board meeting. Looking at the agenda, I am going to extend an invitation for public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, we need roll call. I'm sorry. We do need a roll call to go into our special meeting, whenever you're ready.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Sorry. Carol Benjamin.
Yes?
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Kara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Mittalish Cotwell.
Here.
Sinal Kocarni.
Yeah.
Thank you. We note all members present, and now I will invite anyone from the public wishing to comment. Seeing none, we will move on to our executive session. We are going to convene in closed session to discuss collective negotiating matters under 5 ALCS 120/2C2, as well as employment of employees under 5 ALCS 120/2C1. When we come back out into open session, no further action will be taken and we will adjourn. Can we have a motion to convene in closed session to discuss collective negotiating matters and employment of employees, please?
Carmichael, so moved.
Benjamin, second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kocarni.
Aye.
Thank you. We are convened in, we are staying here, yes. Yes. Thank you.